Good evening, everyone. The September 8th, 2020 Virtual Legislative Meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Apologies, I need my sheet. Just have in my hand. Mr. Pruski?
Present.
Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Ms. Rodbien?
Present.
Ms. Hare?
Present.
Ms. Lacy?
Present.
Mr. Volkey?
Present.
Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Madam Auditor?
Present.
Madam Legislative Counsel?
Present.
Madam Chair, all council are present as well as Madam Auditor and Madam Legislative Counsel.
Thank you. Please pause while the invocation led by Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to take any moment of silence for those that lost their lives during the COVID-19 pandemic. We still continue to fight, obviously, this piece. And we ask that we look at oversight, we look at smart business. We try and do what we can in Anarundel County to protect all residents as much as possible. We ask this in the Lord's name. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act Statement.
The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. The Maryland Opens Meeting Act, a state law, requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. General provisions, Article, Section 3102(c). The virtual format of this meeting of the county council is due to the COVID-19 emergency and is necessary in light of the serious health risks associated with public gatherings, as well as the governor's various executive orders limiting public gatherings. While a virtual meeting of this type is not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, and allowing written public comments to the legislation be filed with the clerk and considered by the council. The county office of law has defined that the public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public and therefore complies with the Open Meetings Act. And I would add that we need to update that to include actual testimony from the public during the meeting.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form, review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. Because this is a virtual meeting, we cannot be physically located in Annapolis, the county seat, and we cannot provide reasonable seating facilities for the news media or the public. May I have a motion to suspend Rules 3-103, 3-105, and 3-106?
So move, Councilman Pruski.
May I have a second?
Rodbien, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to suspend Rules 3-103, 3-105, and 3-106.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six and the affirmative, one and the negative. The motion to suspend Rules 3-103, 3-105, and 3-106 is passed.
We are very pleased to have members of the public signed up to testify directly before the county council this evening. Testimony submitted through the online tool is still being received. It has been received by all council members and is posted online for the public to view. And counts of the submissions will be announced at the appropriate time. We will now open our invitation to audience. We will do this in two parts. First, we will hear a summary of any testimony received online or via mail or Dropbox. Then we will hear from members of the public who registered to speak by the 8:00 a.m. deadline today. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on any subject not included in the printed agenda received from the members of the public?
Madam Chair, we had one submission of written testimony which we shared with the council and posted on the county website.
Thank you. We will now hear from members of the public who signed up ahead of time. We have 24 people signed up to speak on matters not listed on our agenda. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. And I'll add, at the two-minute mark, I will let you know you'll hear a buzzer and you'll be indicated to wrap up your comments, and then you will be muted, and I will move on to the next person on the list. We will begin with Mr. Michael Brown. Remember to state your name and address first. Is Mr. Brown with us this time? Okay, we'll move on to our next participant, and we'll circle back to see if Mr. Brown has had some technical difficulties. Ms. Anna Chaney?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. I really appreciate it. I have one main request.
Ms. Chaney, please state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Anna Chaney, 5801 Brooks Woods Road in Lothian, Maryland. So, 13th generation, Anarundel County, and it is my pleasure to be involved and I honor to be allowed to speak this evening. I thank you very much for that, and I have one very clear request. I would request that the council reassume their due legislative process by voting on issues that our county executive decides to make orders, executive orders, that are incongruent with our governor's mandates during this public safety emergency status of our county. I understand that in March, there was a bill passed, number 2420, that claimed a state of safety emergency, and thereby gave our county executive the right to make these decisions unilaterally. And I do believe that I sent everyone a letter that I sent to Chairperson Pickard requesting that you take on this duty, this legislative duty, to engage in collaboratively discussing and debating and determining the viability insofar as, you know, the benefit to our county as these decisions are being made. So, the details are in the letter. I don't want to take up more time. I know you have a lot of people here speaking, but I do think it's very, very important that because of the wide sweeping decisions that are being made and how they can be damaging or not to the public health and welfare of our communities, that it's very important that you maintain your role. And we have voted you into the positions to serve your constituents. We believe in you, we trust you, and we need you to be a part of this very, very, very important process. So, I do thank you in advance, and if you have any questions from my letter, please let me know. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Chaney. We will move along at this time to hear from Ms. Lisa McCory. I'm not seeing Ms. Lisa McCory come forward. We'll give her a minute. Okay. We're going to move along. I'm going to remember that she was not here, and we're going to move on to Ms. Karen Blevins. Ms. Blevins, please join us and state your name and address for the record. I do see Ms. Blevins has joined us. Be on my list of attendees, but I'm not seeing her join the meeting.
Ms. Blevins, if you can, try talking, and then please double-check your microphone and speaker. You look to be, have your microphone off.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Blevins, unfortunately, your microphone still seems to be off, so if you can be checking that, we will try to circle back. Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am. We'll move forward with Ms. Jessica Green. I don't see Ms. Green's name on my list, but I also, oh. Ms. Jessica Green, are you with us?
Ms. Green, as we stated, please try talking, and then please check your microphone and speaker. And if you, they are usually located at the bottom left of your Zoom screen.
Okay, we're going to come back to Ms. Green as well. I do see Mr. Michael Brown has, well, can we, Mr. Brown, are you prepared to speak at this time?
Yes. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes. Good evening, sirs. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Michael Brown, M.I.C.H.A.E.L.B.R.O.W.N. I live at 7651 Timbercross Lane in Glen Burnie, Maryland, 21060. I wanted to call my, I'm in Councilman Volkey's district. I've talked to him about this briefly. Two things I wanted to bring up related to COVID is these recovery workgroup meetings. They're not, they're not public, and they have no minutes. And I find that very hard to believe as decisions are being made in those meetings that are affecting everyone in the county, and if they're not being made public, then minutes have to be made available. Second, there's been times where the data that is being released by the Health Department, they have stated multiple times where that data will be released on a daily basis, but there are Monday through Friday, but there's been times in the past where that data has not been released on a daily basis, and that's important. Data disclosure to all residents in the county to see where we lie on each day, I think that will make the effort for, these decisions are being made by the county health officer and the county executive, a little bit more understanding if that data is made sure to be updated every day. In particular, I'm referring to the hospitalization data.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will move to, next on my list is Mr. Peter Green. Mr. Peter Green, if you have joined us, please unmute yourself, and you have two minutes.
Mr. Green, if you could try talking, and again, double-checking your speaker, your microphone.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. I do not see the Greens on the list here. I did want to point out, I have one, two, three telephone numbers showing up that are not identified. It's possible that those are members of the public. If you would like to, at the end, we can check in with the phone, with the callers, and see if those, if they identify themselves as someone who is registered, then we can try it that way, too.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to move forward with Ms. Amy Leahy. Ms. Leahy, are, you joined us? Ms. Leahy, you can unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. Okay. We'll just keep going down this list.
Yet, Madam Chair, unfortunately, it seems like a lot of people simply are not here when I look at the attendees list.
Yeah, I'm seeing the attendee list as well, and I'm, I'm not, so we're, we'll just keep going down the list. We published it. Ms. Robin Zellers? Okay, Ms. Sellers. Number nine on our list is Ms. Jennifer Dwyer. Has she joined us this evening? I see Ms. Dwyer. You can unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Jennifer Dwyer, 500 Pinefield Drive, Severna Park, Maryland. I'm here tonight to ask why Stuart Pittman has unilaterally held Anarundel County back in Phase 2, when all the metrics align with moving on to Phase 3 of Maryland's roadmap to recovery. His strict and stringent mandates throughout the pandemic have been oppressive and excessively controlling. He must have been groomed for this type of behavior while working for Acorn in Chicago for nine years, which is an organization that is infamous for their quota to register voters no matter the tactics, just like when he sent mass text message alerts to county residents, asking them to take action and snitch on local businesses for violating his face mask mandates, which in turn pitted residents against one another, just like how Pittman ran our beloved police chief, Tim Altamore, out of his position with his new movement to defund the police. I would like to request that Stuart Pittman be stripped of his executive powers and/or removed from office as county executive immediately, before further unnecessary damage is done to our businesses, our residents, and our livelihoods. Businesses in this county are failing at a rapid rate under his leadership. The residents of this county, especially children, are also suffering under his leadership. Children are being forced to wear face masks while playing outside in the playgrounds on 90-degree days. It's an oppressing sight to see, especially as a mother. I have been proven, it has been proven that children rarely spread the virus according to the CDC's new numbers. They do not need to be wearing masks outdoors. Parents want children back in school in person, with masks being optional for students. Finally, I want to see the immediate removal of Pittman's ridiculous 10:00 p.m. perfume on businesses serving alcohol. He needs to stop harassing our businesses and let them get back to business as usual, which would solve so many of the problems crippling our community today. I beg of you, please take action to remove Stuart Pittman's executive powers. Enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dwyer. We'll move along to the 10th person on our list, Ms. Melissa Haas. Oh, I see, you can unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. You may want to check your audio settings, your speakers, and your microphone, because I see that you're here, but you are still muted. We will move along to number 11, Ms. Kim Prata. Ms. Prata, have you joined us this evening? Okay. I do see Ms. Leahy has joined us. Ms. Leahy, you were not present when I called your name earlier. Are you prepared to speak at this time? Please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Is this still the invitation to audience?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Amy Leahy, 712 Monmouth Avenue, Severna Park, Maryland. And I would like to address the county executive's orders that have been signed by the county council that gives him executive privilege over this whole COVID virus thing. I believe it's time that the county council acts to remove these executive authority powers that he has currently in place. We are far beyond the point of needing to have the county executive in disagreement with what the governor is allowing, and I believe it's time to just remove his executive powers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leahy. Next on my list is Mr. John Jason. Mr. Jason, have you joined us this evening? You can unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Awesome. Just got unmuted. My name is John Jason from Pasadena, Maryland, District 3. I'm here on invite from Mr. Nathan Volkey to take the power back and talk to the county council about the handling of coronavirus. And indeed, I am in favor of taking the power back and getting our lives back. I'd like to focus on that last word, though, "lives," which also comes from "live," meaning that I, and I imagine most of Anarundel County, would like to live through this pandemic. I imagine I, and most of this county, would like to get through this pandemic without severe, long-lasting medical issues that impact us for the rest of our lives. So, I am all in favor of taking the power back, and I think we should collectively use our voices to hold our national administration accountable for its complete and utter failure in managing this pandemic. I think we should take the power back, and we should use our collective voices to hold the governor accountable for turning this pandemic into the most macabre version of "whose line is it anyway," where the rules are made up and the points just don't matter. Problem is, these points are lives, these points are people's future medical health. So, I think we should take the power back, and we should hold county council members accountable when they push to reopen prematurely and put our lives in danger merely for some economic benefit. And I think we should take the power back, and we should support Stuart Pittman and the health officer in trying to make rational decisions in a fight that they did not want and that they frankly don't have the resources to adequately address. So, I think we should take the power back and help them. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move forward with number 13 on our list this evening, Nelda Fink. I see Ms. Fink. There you go.
Hi, I'm here.
You have two minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Nelda Fink, F-I-N-K. I live at 8372 Norwood Drive in Millersville, Maryland, 21108. I have to say, I agree with Ms. Jennifer Dwyer, and I agree with Ms. Leahy. I don't agree with Mr. Jason. I do agree that we need to be, that the county executive needs to be stripped of his, his executive powers. I'd rather focus on numbers which aren't available yet. Probably will never be solidified into anything meaningful. We will only, they will only be estimates. I'd rather focus on the numbers of businesses closed as a result of this, because behind every business entity is people, human beings. My gosh, your neighbors, whose livelihoods have been destroyed by this whole debacle, by your decision to allow this tyranny to begin and then to continue. Now, I don't understand all of the political issues that have been going on in my county. I haven't been keeping up with them, and that's my fault. But I see if, if you all have released some of your powers to the county executive, then I believe that we should be holding you all accountable as well. But as an elected official, you took an oath to uphold the Constitution and to protect the citizens, yourselves included, your neighbors, your constituents, and you all have violated that oath by allowing this tyranny to begin and now to continue when higher supposed authorities have allowed it to end. You are just despoes, bowing down to your emperor. Well, I don't live in an authoritarian county with an emperor ruling over me and with despoes, carrying out those orders. I live in a democracy within a state and within a county that is still under our Constitution. So, I am also suggesting that the county executive be stripped of his, of his powers.
Ms. Fink, your time is up. Can you finish your sentence, please?
Yes, I agree that the county executive needs to be stripped of his powers and that we do take the power back from the county executive. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move now to number 14 on the list, Chelsea Treadwell. Ms. Treadwell, are you joining us this evening? I don't see Ms. Treadwell in my list of attendees. I'm going to move forward with Ms. Nancy Harrison. Ms. Harrison, have you joined us this evening? I see you, Ms. Harrison. Please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Can you hear me? This is Nancy Harrison.
Yes, ma'am. You have two minutes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. My name is Nancy Harrison. I live at 242 Poe Court. That's in Severna Park. Ms. Fiedler, I am one of your constituents. I would like to speak this evening again regarding the reopening plan. My issue really is that I think that county executive Pittman has done the correct thing. Whether you want to take the power back and reaffirm what he's done, that's fine. If you want to take the power back to do something different, then I disagree. All of our public officials, from the county executive to members of the county council to department heads, are presumably serving in those roles because they feel it is, they have something to offer our community. And we need to focus on community when addressing the pandemic. This is going to take a community effort. A lot of people seem to have the opinion that if you're afraid of something, if you don't like it, you can stay home. Some people don't have the option of staying home, and sometimes staying home doesn't help the situation. You all may have heard of a wedding in Maine that has turned out to be a super-spreeder event. 65 people attended the wedding in violation of a 50-person gathering limit. The wedding has now resulted in nearly 150 cases of COVID-19, including three deaths. None of the three people who have died attended the wedding. They stayed home. They didn't have that option. Someone brought it to them, because a large gathering took place and coronavirus was spread at that gathering. The virus cannot be beat simply by asking those who might be adversely affected to stay home, even if that would be possible. County Executive Pittman was correct to stay at Stage 2. He has a fine health officer to assist him, unlike some administrations who listen to MyPillow guy or someone selling a drug. Individuals cannot solve this problem. You cannot say, everybody do what you want. We have to have a system. It's got to involve the community, and it's going to take a community effort to beat this. Thank you.
I have to unmute myself. Thank you, Ms. Harrison. We're going to move on to number 16 on the list, Ms. Jessica Ewing. Please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Hi there. Jessica Ewing, Fox Creek Lane, Davidsonville, Maryland. The county council consists of seven local representatives, some Democrats and some Republicans. Regardless of political affiliation, you were elected as our voice, a job some of you seemingly are uninterested in doing. You gave our voice and our power away when you gave it to the county executive. It's the moments of crisis that we need local representation the most, and you willfully decided we don't matter. We were lied to by our government for support to shut down our economy and lives for 14 days to flatten the curve. I don't even know what the benchmark is anymore, other than a politically motivated, never-ending finish line. One day, it's not safe for our kids to play tackle football, and after those kids justifiably rallied, they were allowed to play. So is it science or politics? We have kids who are not being educated. If you call what they have done in education, you don't deserve to lead. We have businesses claiming bankruptcy by no fault of their own. We have businesses on the wall of shame at the Health Department website, while Doden Winery enjoys the exact same violations, and they are not on that list. The Liquor Board, by direction of the county executive, is finding barely hanging-on businesses for the same violations from the same executive order that the Health Department is issuing warnings for. What is equal and what is fair in this version of reality? You were all given an opportunity to take the power back, and the Democrats opted not to take responsibility. If that is still your stance today, you should resign and stop taking taxpayer money for a job you refuse to do. You didn't give your power away. You gave ours away, and we want it back. I would like to hear from the council where the work group stands. Are they meeting? Have they stopped meeting at any time? Does the medical system still feel as though they would be overwhelmed? Remember, that's what you all told us was the goal. Where is the goalpost now?
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. We will move on to number 17 on the list, Ms. Jennifer Abney. Ms. Abney, oh, I see you. Please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, super. Yes, my name is Jennifer Abney. I reside at 8436 Garland Road, Pasadena, Maryland. I've been a resident for five years. I'm also the Regional Vice President for Cinemark Theaters. We operate the Egyptian 24 Theater in the Rundle Mills Mall. And I wanted to call in to send the message that movie theaters are safe, and we'd like the chance to reopen. Our industry is second to none in our ability to control the occupancy of our buildings with reserved ticket sales, with spacing out our shows so that we can allow plenty of social distancing in our common areas. When you go on our website to purchase tickets or a group of tickets, our system is designed so that the seats, two seats on either side of you are blocked. That ensures proper social distancing. You know, restaurants have been open inside for quite a while now, and I would just ask everybody to think about your last experience in a restaurant and compare it to your last experience in a movie theater. In a restaurant, you're sitting with a group of people, you're eating, you're socializing, there's very minimum mask-wearing going on. You know, when you're in a movie theater, everybody's facing forward, everybody's watching the movie, there's no interaction, there's no talking, definitely much less interaction in a movie theater than you get in a restaurant or many other venues. Since the day we closed in March, we've been thinking about how we can reopen with an eye on safety. We've been working with the National Association of Theater Owners and a leading epidemiologist. We've developed the Cinema Safe National Program. We go into great detail. We go above and beyond the standards that are set forth in most states as far as businesses being able to open safely. Just as our guests wanted to return to restaurants, malls, casinos, and hair salons, which they've been able to do in Maryland, we feel like the movie theater industry should be given an equal chance and allow guests to make a decision for themselves whether or not they feel safe to return to the cinema. Since March 18th, we have sold no tickets. We've sold no concessions. At the Cinemark Egyptian...
Thank you, Ms. Abney. Can you summarize your last statement? Your two minutes is up.
Yes, we employ over 100 people alone at the Cinemark Egyptian. We're eager to get open, and I know our guests are eager to return, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Abney. We're going to move on to number 18 on our list, Mr. Matt Kula. Mr. Kula, have you joined us this evening? Mr. Kula, if you can hear me, you can unmute yourself. Okay, I don't believe Mr. Kula has joined us. At this time, I'm going to move on to Mr. Joseph Masher. Mr. Masher, are you with us this evening? Oh, there you are.
I'm here.
Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
It's Joseph Masher. I live at 641 Danbury Road in Ridgefield, Connecticut. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Bowtie Cinemas, and I'm here to speak tonight on behalf of the movie theater industry. Bowtie Cinemas is a four-generation family-owned company. We have two theaters in Annapolis, one in the Westfield Mall and one in the Harbor Center. We looked forward to opening our theater in the mall last week and didn't understand that it was up to the county to not let us do that, so we brought back some of our staff. We found out Thursday night that that was not going to happen, so we have to refurl on all of our employees. But speaking on behalf of the industry, we understand that without a safe, solid plan to reopen, nobody would come, and we're not forcing people to come to the movies. 46 states have already allowed for movie theaters to reopen with zero cases of COVID-19 transmission attributed to a movie theater. In Maryland, Bowtie Cinemas in Annapolis employs 100 people between our two theaters. We serve as an anchor for the local community, and the long-term effect that keeping theaters closed is having on our industry is that the remaining 2020 release calendar is falling off and at risk of being canceled and moved into 2021, or worse yet, onto streaming. As the last speaker had said, we follow a strict program of protocols called Cinema Safe, and I encourage you to look at cinemafake.org. Those protocols align with two priorities that the Recovery Work Group in Maryland and Anaronda County said they had two points. One was to keep businesses open, and number two was for mental and social well-being. You know, the experience of being in a movie theater, sharing in a collective experience, talking, sorry, laughing together, crying together, being scared together, is something that people sorely been missing during this pandemic, and I implore you to let us reopen very, very soon. The entire Westfield Mall is open except the theater, and bowling and casinos are not open. In other states that we've opened, people are traveling. For instance, in Connecticut, where we've reopened, we're getting so many people from New York State that don't have a theater open to go to, so people are traveling up to 50 miles to see a movie. I don't think you want your residents traveling into other counties to see a movie when you'd rather keep everybody together in the county.
Mr. Masher?
Yes.
Please finish your statement. Your two minutes is ended.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next on our list is Mr. Curtis Kingsland. Mr. Kingsland, are you with us? Oh, unmute yourself, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Curtis Kingsland, 1378 Vecno Avenue, Oldington, Maryland. Good evening. Okay, I found out about this meeting to a friend, so I got online to see what's going on, and as a disabled vet, and that I think the numbers show clearly that the pandemic is really slowing down our existence. The positivity rate is going up, but there's no death, and the rest of the state is going down. So I believe the council, especially the majority, you need to realize that it's time to take the decision to open the county up all the way. Here's a number show it, unless you want to move the goalposts anywhere you wanted to go, but scientifically the numbers show it's going way down, which I'm thankful for, and it's about time to open counties. I have a lot of friends now, being just retired, that they're barely making ends meet, and that's pretty obvious, especially the majority. You all need to start realizing there's more effects of this, and I think the numbers show beyond a shadow of doubt that we need to open up all the way. And Trend Micro CEO Donald Luskin said his research has shown that there's no correlation between the degrees, states, lockdown to the control of COVID-19 or the deaths of COVID-19. So I'm trying to say in fast because of two minutes, but I appreciate your service, but I think it's obvious the numbers show beyond a shadow of a doubt that we need to open up, especially the majority. You all need to realize you gotta make a serious decision that, you know, join the other three, that this is, you know, the numbers are low, and we got, you know, it's pretty good now, so I appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight, sir. We're going to move on to number 21, Mr. Jason Baker. Mr. Baker, oh, I see you. Please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes. Mr. Baker? Can you unmute yourself? Mr. Baker, you might want to check your settings. Unmute yourself, check your microphone and your speakers. We will circle back to Mr. Baker because we cannot hear him. Mr. Neil Fleur, are you with us this evening? I don't see Mr. Fleur. We'll continue down the list. Mr. Adam Wyndham, have you joined us, sir? Mr. Adam Wyndham, have you joined us this evening? Okay. And last on our list, Mr. Edward Burlett. Mr. Burlett, are you with us this evening? I see you, Mr. Burlett.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes, sir.
My name is Edward Burlavita. I live at 924 Pine Trail in Arnold, Maryland. The current administration of the government in Anaronda County has me puzzled. I have nothing but questions about how Anaronda County is handling the COVID situation. What metrics are you using for any of the current rules and regulations? Why can't we enter Phase 3? Don't you consider your duty to provide a desirable standard of living for your citizens? If that's the case, what are your plans to make that happen? Don't you feel that your handling of the situation has been detrimental to the citizens of Anaronda County? And how do you plan to ensure the quality of life in Anaronda County is improved? Why do you feel Anaronda County is less prepared to enter Phase 3 than other counties in this state? Why do you disagree with Governor Hogan's recommendations to enter Phase 3? What science are you using to arrive at your conclusions? Why are you keeping schools closed? What metrics do you have to open schools? Are unions the reasons that you're keeping schools closed? How do you plan to open the county? Do you have, do all of your concerns disappear on November 4th? I'm not aware of the answers to these questions and the conclusion, and I come to the conclusions that they're mostly politically motivated. If you really believe that this concern helps your constituents, since I don't believe that that's the case. And so I agree with many of the other people that have already spoken that it's the duty of us to relieve the county executive of his current powers and to take the power back for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have now gotten through the 24 people listed. I still see, or I was seeing Mr. Jason Baker, but we can... Has Mr. Baker figured out his technology yet?
Madam Chairman, I believe if we're going to circle back, then the first person on the list that we missed was Ms. Corey.
Can you hear me now?
No, but Mr. Baker is with us, so I guess we'll go with Mr. Baker.
Sorry, he had his hand raised. Mr. Baker, please state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Yeah, so sorry about that. My name is Jason Baker. My address is 294 Forest Lane, Arnold, Maryland. I've lived in Maryland my entire life, and I appreciate your time today. I want to talk about the coronavirus shutdown and the impact it's had on movie theaters. I'm the General Manager of the Annapolis Mall and the Westfield Shopping Center. I've started in the industry when I was 16 years old, worked my way up, and really have a passion for the industry. Personally, this shutdown has been a big struggle for me. I'm a father with three children, with another on the way, and this is a very difficult time. Unemployment's not paying the bills, and I just want to go back to work. I don't want any special treatment or any handout. I just want to have the opportunity to go back to work, just like everyone else. My staff wants to go back to work, and I'm having a difficult time explaining why every other business is open in the mall except for the movie theater. They've asked me, why can casinos open? Why can bowling alleys open but not theaters? And I'm a little unsure myself, and I'm just hoping that we can move to Phase 3 and get everyone back to work. Like Joe's mentioned, we employ over 100 people between the two locations, and they desperately want to go back to work. We're hoping there's a light at the end of the tunnel, and we really want to open our theaters as soon as possible. We can open our theater safely, and we would like to have the opportunity to do so. I really appreciate your time this evening, and thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to go back up to the top of the list and see if anyone has had a chance to fix their audio. Ms. Lisa McCurry, have you joined us? I don't see Lisa McCurry. I do see Ms. Karen Blevins.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes, Ms. Blevins.
Yes, my name is Karen Blevins. I live in Pasadena, Maryland, and Nathan Volkey is our representative. I guess I just wanted to pose a question to the council as to what were the decisions that made you turn power over to the county executive? What gates and thresholds were you considering? And at what point, what gates and thresholds were you considering and to which you would take the power back? And I asked that question mainly because as part of my position at my, where the place where I work, I'm a continuity specialist for the federal government. I understand how emergency operation command centers work when the federal government is called into a local jurisdiction during a crisis and how the handover of power is given to the authorities that arrive on the scene. There are very specific gates, thresholds, and requirements that must be met for that handover of power to occur. There are also various specific gates and thresholds that need to be met in order to hand that power back. And the reason for that is because when you're in the middle of a big emergency situation, like you were in the very beginning, and you didn't know how difficult this was going to be to manage, you didn't know about Zoom, you didn't know about all, you know, are we above 5%, are we below 5%? Really, you're only at a pandemic if you're above 5%. So in the very beginning, you handed that power off, right? So if you had been working as, in an official command center, you would have passed some gates in order to hand that power off. And then once you had figured out the technology, figured out that you could do this, you know, do your position and effectively take the power back. You're no longer in a crisis situation where decisions need to be made on the fly. You're in a position where you can discuss and determine forward actions. In order to do that, you need to take that power back. You need to represent us, like we have voted you in office to represent us.
Ms. Blevins, your two minutes is up. Can you summarize and...
Yes, don't hand over power over lightly. You take it back as quickly as you possibly can in any situation.
Thank you, Ms. Blevins.
Thank you.
We're going to keep going down this list. We're going to double back one more time to see if people's audio is restored. Have Jessica or Peter Green joined us? I don't see either Greens. Robin Zellers? I don't see Ms. Zellers. Melissa Haas? Oh, Melissa Haas, thank you for joining us. Please state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Okay, Melissa Gurney-Hassy. I've lived in the county.
I've lived in the county for my entire life. We've been small business owners for 40 years in this county. A member of the PBA on the Shop Local Committee. I'm not speaking for the PBA, but I am concerned about all my small business friends who are fined constantly, shut down, because they cannot keep up with this tyrannical mask mandate, which do nothing. I would love to start a grassroots move, waiting for a William Wallace to come along and save me, but he's not here. So I beg anyone who's listening to look me on Facebook, because if the cheerleading parents and the football parents can get some, with 100 people, get what they want, well, we can get what we want as well. And also, the snitch line should not be anonymous. If you want to call and tell on the businesses, then you should have to state your name and your address for the record. And I think that is all I would like to say, but it is beautiful to see all your non-masked faces in front of me. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Haasi. Has Ms. Chelsea Treadwell joined us? No. Mr. Matt Kula? No. Mr. Neil Fleur? And the last one that we'll ask again, Mr. Adam Wyndham, have you joined us this evening? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so, let's see, I've been in, apologies, been in contact. We should double-check the attendees' lists that you and I see are right to see if there's anyone on that that was not on your type list that we can check in. I believe, let's see, we take a moment. I believe I see Ashley Millard, and I don't believe she's on my list. Is she on yours?
Ms. Millard was, was, had registered to testify on Bill 5720.
My apologies, then.
No problem.
Okay. Um, then I guess we have everyone, we try.
Thank you. Well, for our first attempt, I think we did pretty well. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any agenda item, any council member would like to place? Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda at this time? Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take a moment. Obviously, there's a lot of concern about what's taking place in the county currently, and one of the guests did ask, actually, I think it was a few of the guests asked about the COVID recovery work group. I am one of the two council members on that work group. So I just wanted to share a few thoughts. Councilwoman Lacy, way back when this work group was put together, also asked for information regarding it to see how things were going. So initially, we were meeting every week, but we have not been doing that since the governor has not been doing press conferences every week. We kind of have been doing our meetings in line with the anticipated announcements from the governor's office. I have expressed that I believe we need to be meeting weekly regardless of the governor's action, especially if the county executives go and keep Anarondo County in Phase 2. Every day, we restrict small businesses, more than the state is another day, that they are closer to closing. One of the speakers also mentioned that for the same reason we are allowing sports to move forward, we are, we should be considering retail. Folks are going to go outside of the county, and most of the jurisdictions have moved to Phase 3, and that becomes more challenging for the tracing efforts. I've also requested that minutes be taken. One of the other speakers here today did request that if we are not going to hold these meetings in a public forum, I think it is only most transparent to it, the minimum do some minutes. We are not currently doing those. I don't know if that's going to change in the future. There's been a lot of questions related to hospital and healthcare capacity, specifically the amount of beds. We have still not gotten a full answer on that, and some other.
Ms. Fiedler, I'm just curious. The question was, was there any item a councilman would like to place on the agenda at this time?
Well, I had my yellow flag up before you asked that question, though.
Oh, my apologies, my apologies. My box was covering you.
That's okay.
I was waiting for the agenda item. I'm like, are we getting to an agenda item?
I just, I just, some folks had asked about the recovery work group, so I just wanted to run through, as much as I have in some of my notes and from memory. We've also discussed that our hospitals, if you look at our dashboard, have held at about 20 patients or less around there for several months. And there was a lot of questions about the high-risk locations versus the high-risk gatherings. One of the questions asked at our last meeting was, are those locations, do those high-risk levels indicate that that's where transmission takes place? If I recall correctly, the answer was no, but again, minutes would be helpful in that case. And one more final point, and this was something that was quoted in a recent Capitol article, the removal of the curfew, or at least moving curfew for bars and restaurants to have indoor dining past 10 o'clock. When we talked about that in the work group, and then the county executive decided to move forward with the curfew, our numbers did go down as far as positives, and that was attributed to that curfew. However, the numbers have gone up, and I've asked, well, if the numbers are going up again, is the curfew really doing what we thought it was? So that is kind of it in a rapid-fire nutshell, and I will continue to push for minutes of our meetings, and hopefully we can get there by our next scheduled meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda at this time? Okay, seeing none. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
Lacy, so moved.
May I have a second?
Rodby in second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of July 6th and July 20th, 2020.
July 6, 2020, the meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 7:00 PM. Ms. Pickard gave the invocation, followed by Ms. Fiedler leading the Pledge of Allegiance. Meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 6th and July 20th?
Madam Chair, I haven't done the 20th yet. Thank you. July 20th, the meeting was called to order by Chairman Allison Pickard at 7:00 PM. Ms. Fiedler gave the invocation, followed by Mr. Volkey leading the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present.
Thank you. Now may I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 6th and July 20th, 2020?
Lacy, so moved.
May I have a second?
Rodby in second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. The minutes of July 6th and July 20th, 2020 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Yes, Madam Chair, and I had to remind myself, and going forward in the meeting, I'll also remind everyone else, as everyone has noticed, we have our live transcription this meeting. I have a tendency to read very quickly when I'm going through these. I will be reading a little slower to assist our transcriptionist.
Thank you.
Bill 6620, An Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Supplementary Appropriations, Capital Budget, and Program Fund Transfer. Bill 6720, An Ordinance Concerning Floodplain Management, Erosion and Sediment Control, and Stormwater Management. Stormwater Management. Bill 6820, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Admissions and Amusement Tax, Zoning, Farm Alcohol Production Facility. Bill 6920, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Farm or Agricultural Heritage Sites Days and Special Events. Bill 7020, An Ordinance Concerning Pensions, Employees Retirement Plan, Fire Service Retirement Plan, Police Service Retirement Plan, Detention Officers and Deputy Sheriffs Retirement Plan, Disability Pensions. 7120, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel, Employee Relations, Limitations on Joining Employee Organizations. Bill 7220, An Ordinance Concerning Licenses and Registrations, Unattended Donation Boxes. Bill 7320, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Chickens and Ducks in Residential Districts. Bill 7420, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Real Property Taxes, Public Safety Officers' Property Tax Credit.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening. And I have been told you could go a little bit faster.
Very good. Resolution 3120, Resolution Confirming Nominations to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anarondo County, Incorporated. Resolution Number 3220, Resolution Approving a Nomination of a Member to the Anarondo County Human Relations Commission. Resolution Number 3320, Resolution Approving the Continued Service of William Lowery as Acting Chief of Police. Resolution Number 3420, Resolution Authorizing the Submittel of an Application for Community Development Block Grant Funds and Recognizing the County Executive's Authority to Act in Connection with the Grant. Resolution Number 3520, Resolution Approving the Application to the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs for a Grant under the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program, Federal Fiscal Year 2020, Location Solicitation and Recognizing the County Executive's Authority to Act in Connection with the Grant.
Thank you. May I have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on resolutions numbers 31-20 and 32-20 later this evening?
Councilwoman Rodby in, so moved.
May I have a second?
Lacy, second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules to vote on resolutions number 31-20 and 32-20 later this evening.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Nay.
Ms. Rodby?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to vote on resolutions number 31 and 32 later this evening is, has, is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 52-20 as amended.
Bill Number 5220, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Pawn Shops.
Thank you. This is Mr. Volkey's bill. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too will try to adjust my pace for the transcriptionist to ensure she can catch everything. This bill is a relatively straightforward bill. We've talked about this previously. The purpose of the bill is to lower the setback from residential structures for a pawn shop. I have a particular pawn shop in my district that this would affect. I had originally proposed a different idea that would have involved getting the consent of abutting landowners. However, the Office of Planning and Zoning indicated their preference would be a decreased setback instead of the landowner's consent. As a result, we amended the bill, and I would ask my colleagues to vote favorably on this as it is, again, a relatively minor adjustment, and it's one that I believe the Office of Planning and Zoning and the other small businesses around the county, and this is something we can do to help them at this time. Thank you.
Would the administration like to respond at this time?
Now, I need to unmute. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the council. It's good to see everybody this evening. Joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Lori Rhodes from OPZ, from IMP, Mr. Bill Deck, and Mr. Africa. And joining us all the way from retirement is Mr. Bill Bryant from Office of Law, Ms. Kelly Kenny. And I may have neglected to state my name. For the record, my name is Pete Barron. I'm the Government Relations Director for the County Exec. The administration appreciates the amendments the council adopted at the last meeting that addressed the use of the affidavits of consent. The one particular business the bill intends to assist seems to be a great corporate citizen, but the council needs to take into consideration that this future change will apply to the entire county and will change the rules for future pawn shops. The council needs to determine if it is comfortable with the 100-foot distance from a residential structure as a matter of policy. We're happy to answer any technical questions that you may have.
Are there any questions from the council at this time? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 52-20 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we had five submissions of written testimony, which we shared with the council and posted on the county website.
Thank you. We will now hear from members of the public who signed up ahead of time. We have one person signed up to speak on this bill. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. My list shows Ms. Amy Leahy. Ms. Leahy, have you joined us this evening? Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm sorry. I did sign up for that, but I'm not prepared to testify on that particular bill. Thank you, but I will testify later on another one. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. That was the only person signed up to speak on this bill. The public hearing on Bill Number 52-20 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 52-20 as amended.
Bill Number 5220, An Ordinance Concerning Pawn Shops.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 52-20 as amended.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Rodby?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 5220 as amended is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 53-20.
Bill number 5320, an ordinance concerning zoning, commercial telecommunications facilities.
This is Mr. Volkey's bill. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. And again, for ease, I'll try to speak slowly. We have debated this bill previously, and in front of the council. The overview of the bill, as I believe everyone knows, is that this bill would require an additional...
Mr. Volkey, I apologize for interrupting, but you are a little garbled.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. This would provide for an additional step if a commercial telecommunications facility was located on property in case the requirement that... Check, check.
It's best when you slow down.
In any event, this would require a technical analysis to show the street... So, this bill was previous to the last session of the council, and I'd ask my colleagues to go quickly on this bill. Thank you.
Would the administration like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Pete Barron with the administration. I have several folks joining me at the virtual table from OPZ, Ms. Lori Rhodes, from OIT, Mr. Gary Houston, from DPW, Mr. Alex Bakie, although I don't see him on my Brady Bunch screen at the moment, from Central Services, Ms. Christine Romans, and Mr. Stephen Walker from our school system, Mr. Alex Shaknovich, and from the Office of Law, Ms. Lori Blair Klausmeyer. The administration appreciates the amendments that were adopted at the last meeting. In this virtual world we're living in right now, it really does show how important high-speed internet and connectivity is, and this council will remember well the work that went into the small cell legislation that we passed in 2019, giving the county some of the strongest controls in the state on the placement and appearance of these devices. While, while I do, and the administration does appreciate the amendments making the bill better, we are still not quite comfortable with supporting this bill at this time. I'd like to turn it over. We're happy to answer any questions, but I'd like to turn it over to see if Mr. Shaknovich has anything that he would like to state, given that this bill mostly affects school systems at this point.
Mr. Shaknovich, you have the floor.
For the record, Alex Shaknovich, Chief Operating Officer. I believe our comments stand as presented at the last meeting and as represented within Madam Auditor's blue letter. With that, I've got nothing additional to offer this time. Thank you for the opportunity.
Are there any questions from the council at this time? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on bill number 53-20 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received?
Hey, excuse us, someone has, there is unmuted, and we hear background.
Fun times. Do we have any written testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have had 27 submissions of written testimony, which we shared with the council and posted on the county website.
Thank you. We will now hear from members of the public who signed up ahead of time. We have one person signed up to speak on this bill. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. We will begin with Ms. Julie Howes. I don't know if I'm saying your name right, but Ms. Howes, have you joined us?
Yes, I have. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Julia Howes, 4951 Chestnut Street, Shadyside, Maryland 20764. I am against bill 5320, as I think the bill is poorly wrote and is open to many different interpretations. The Shadyside Elementary Project has been debated on for over three years, starting back in 2017, and has unfairly been postponed, paused, and dragged out for no reason. The lot behind the school has always been and remains the best solution for our community. We need the cell tower now more than ever. Families and residents are teleworking, e-learning, and getting ready for telehealth appointments. We are relying on cell coverage and technology more than ever. For three very long years, we attended countless meetings, sent emails, wrote letters, submitted public testimony, and finally, this past spring, we received the Anaronda County Public School Board of Education vote we had been praying and waiting for. They gave Milestone Corporation the approval to move forward with the project. The community members were appreciative that our safety concerns had finally been addressed. We were glad that issues such as lack of coverage heightened by the pandemic would be addressed in our near future. The quality of life for our community would be significantly improved. When released, I read over bill 5320 and thought that Shadyside Elementary wouldn't be impacted because our project was started over three years ago. Plus, preparations had been done long before that. We were already far enough along. The permits and obstacles had already been faced. However, I recently learned that that was not correct. I need you and your colleagues to reconsider some major flaws with the bill. The word necessary is not defined. What are the criteria to warrant a project as necessary? Who decides what is necessary and what isn't? Why would our project that has already been through so much be a part of this bill? Would there be any consideration for existing projects? The cell tower at Shadyside is already under review and shouldn't be considered in this bill. I am not sure of other projects, but I think if the community has already decided, why would we go against that? We need to move forward in advancing our county with technology. This is certainly not a time to go backwards in time. We must move forward, and we must keep this project and other projects moving forward for our resident's safety. Personally, as a school fundraiser, I think schools need more opportunities for revenue. The telecommunications technology has improved and safe, and schools have been a home for cell towers for years.
You've reached your two minutes. Thank you for joining us this evening and being prompt. Madam, that was the only person signed up to speak. The public hearing on bill number 53-20 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 53-20 as amended.
Bill number 53-20, an ordinance concerning zoning, commercial telecommunications facilities.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I see a flag. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Following up on the public testimony we just heard, I had actually reached out to Ms. Klausmeyer, Ms. Schuet, and Ms. Rhodes at Planning and Zoning to try and understand a little bit about the impact of this bill, particularly with respect to that project. And I would just like, if you all could confirm for me that, in fact, this bill would impact the Shadyside Tower project because it has not yet been approved and shovels in the ground, and in fact, they would then have to sort of go back to the drawing board and do a new technical analysis for that tower. Is that an accurate statement?
Lori Rhodes, Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, Anaronda County. That is an accurate statement, because there's no grandfathering language in the bill. And it's my understanding that they filed for a grading permit, but the permit has not yet been issued.
Thank you so much. Jessica Hare, District 7. With that, and I certainly understand the intent of the sponsor, and I respect that, but we've seen this from a number of public testimonies that have come in via written. We just heard it. There are places in District 7, in the Shadyside area, where calling for an ambulance is not possible because of the lack of cell coverage and the safety concerns that come with that, coupled with the long arduous process that is already in place for these projects to move forward. I see this as just sort of an unintended consequence of this particular bill without grandfathering provisions or without consideration for those projects in the pipeline, and I can't support the bill for that reason, the way it's written. I know that this was a long process for that particular project, and it was finally approved by the Board of Education after a whole lot of debate and a number of public hearings, and I hesitate to step on that now at this time.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Rhodes, just a question about that grading permit that you mentioned. When did they file for that?
I cannot give you the actual date. I did speak to Mark Wiedemeyer, who is the Assistant Director, and he indicated that the grading permit had been reviewed as well as the building permit, but it had not been issued. So, I was not going to go to the vested right area because I'm not an attorney. So, that's something that, you know, any applicant or developer can question, you know, how much money has been spent, you know, what they relied on when they filed. But usually, grandfathering language is what we're accustomed to in our code to make it clear as to when the thresholds have been set for new laws. But I think if someone was to question vested rights, they probably would, would make that based on the money that was spent and what they've done so far as, as far as meeting all the code requirements, but I didn't want to go there because I'm not a lawyer.
Mr. Volkey?
I think Ms. Schuet wanted to add something, so I'll defer to her.
My apologies. Ms. Schuet, we need to get you a flag.
I have a flag. I just don't have it close to me at the moment. In the absence of a grandfathering clause in a bill, then case law controls whether or not you are nonetheless vested in your rights to proceed. The case law is very difficult to meet. You have to have substantial construction. I think there's even a case which said that the pouring of the foundation wasn't good enough. It has to be very clear and substantial construction. So, under the circumstances described here, they would not be vested.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. So, one follow-up, Ms. Rhodes, if we were to pass this bill tonight, and the county executive were to then sign it within the next 10 days, and then it takes 45 days until it takes effect, are the applicants governed by the law at the time that they applied until the bill takes effect? Or are they, from the time that the bill passes the council, going to be governed by that law?
It would be governed by the law when it takes effect.
So, presuming that the Office of Inspections and Permits approves the grading permit within the next 55 days or so, 45 days, this would be a non-factor for the Shadyside site? Is that right?
They would have to issue the building permit.
Okay. Do we have any sense from the Office of Inspections and Permits if they are currently dealing with permits within 45 days that have been submitted at least prior to tonight?
I cannot honestly answer that question. I do not know. You know, with, with the pandemic and the turnaround, I can't say for sure what the turnaround time would be. I would have to get back to you on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. I also know that's not your purview, but I have been in communications with the Office of Inspections and Permits and the Application Center regarding other questions about other folks in totally separate situations applying for permits, and they've indicated to me that they have a two-week turnaround right now. So, that's why I was asking when the application was submitted, because my understanding is that the county is operating nearly at, I think, 88% capacity, something like that, maybe even more. So, we're looking at a quick turnaround time. Like, I guess I'm just trying to understand, if this application has already been submitted, how much of a real impact we're talking about? I understand the preference for grandfathering language, but I'm also looking at the practical reality of timing. So, I don't know if there's anybody from the administration that can speak to that. If not, then I guess we all just have to make our own conclusions.
I can't speak to the timing at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes.
Is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on bill number 53-20 as amended.
Ms. Pruski?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Nay.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, this bill number 5320 as amended is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of bill number 54-20.
Bill number 5420, an ordinance concerning pension, deferred retirement option program, detention officers and deputy sheriff's retirement plan, employees retirement plan, eligibility participants.
This bill is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table from the Office of Personnel is Ms. Dickerson and Ms. Bedowski from Budget, Mr. Teroux from Detention, Superintendent Martin from the Sheriff, Ms. Smith, the HR Specialist, and from Law, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. Bill 54-20, the detention and deputy sheriff drop pension bill. The purpose of this bill is to amend the pension code for certain county employees as a result of collective bargaining. Correctional program specialists and correctional justice program specialists employed as of June 30th, 2020 will be eligible to participate in the drop. With that, we're happy to answer any questions and ask for a favorable outcome on this bill.
Thank you. Are there any questions of my colleagues for the administration regarding 54-20? Seeing none, we will now open the... Oh, Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this will be quick. I'm just hoping that Madam Auditor could actually just give me a very quick... It looks to me like pieces of this actually saved the county money, but then maybe I'm misunderstanding the blue letter. So, I'm hoping you can just quickly clarify that for me or not. Let me get my mic back on. Bill number 5420, what it's basically doing is, let me pull this up to kind of go through. It's adding certain positions to be able to get the drop, but it's also moving certain people to the employees retirement plan, which does cost less. So, to answer your question, yes, there are things that will save the county money in the long run and things that will cost the county money. Do you want any specifics? Or does any... Can you give a net effect? You're asking me to add? Let me see. I don't know that everything could be quantified exactly, but let me see. So, the first one...
Maybe, Madam Chair, while Madam Auditor is doing a little arithmetic, I can add a little bit of context.
I'd like, excuse me for interrupting. I would like to remind everyone that particularly with the live transcription, it's really important for everyone to state their name before they start speaking.
Apologies, Madam Administrator. Pete Barron with the administration.
It wasn't just you.
The list of participants on my sheet was so long, I didn't realize I had a second page to my talking points. So, the, there are employees in the detention management classification that are hired after the effective date of the legislation will be enrolled in the employees retirement plan, as Madam Auditor referenced, and the code is also changed to add the job classification of deputy... to add the job classification of Deputy Sheriff Corporal to the list of Category 1 participants. Ms. Dickerson and her team can provide more context if needed, and hopefully I bought Madam Auditor enough time to do some math.
So I do appreciate the time. It's a little more complicated than that because, you know, there's annual impacts, and then there's overall impacts. So I'm not sure I can give you an exact number. And some, it will depend on how it works over time. For instance, they're moving employees in certain positions to the Employees Retirement Plan, but it's not right away. So over time, as those positions transfer, it will save the county more money. If they all left tomorrow, and you had all new people in there the next day for like the CPSs, it would save the county roughly 216,000, right, in a year? But that's not going to happen overnight. Likewise with the drop, it's the same thing. It's an annual increase for those positions of 85,000 a year to participate in the drop. But as they leave, a piece of that is amortized over eight years because that's to pay for the unfunded liability for what they've incurred as they went, where the 17,000 is like a normal cost for them to have that drop participation available to them. But again, as they leave, that number will get smaller as new people are not allowed to participate in the drop. So I don't know that it's that easy to pull forward. There's also the same thing with the criminal justice programs supervisors. There's less of them. And we tried to come up with a fiscal impact based on the actuary, but the actuary didn't actually use those particular positions, and their salaries are a little higher. So it'll be a little bit more than what I'm listing there as 143.7. Let's see. Annual salary. Yeah, and so the 143.7 is as new people come in, if they all came in tomorrow, that's what it would be in the new Employee Retirement Plan, where it's, you know, based on the CPS's estimate, it's like 19,000 a year extra for them to be able to get drop. But yet again, that's not at their high salary. So, I mean, I tried to give an impact to kind of give you an idea of what it's going to cost. And the same with the Deputy Sheriff's being in that category list one. That was the intention all along. They just weren't calculated in there. So it is really hard to kind of come up with a net effect because you don't know what's going to happen. But there are definitely positives and negatives. And they... I don't want to say they net out, but, you know, they're of equal weight. How about if that helps?
Thank you. Jessica Hare, District 7, maybe one follow up. Is this consistent with the budget for this fiscal year?
So, yes and no. So the... So when you're moving people in Employee Retirement Plan, you know, that's going forward. So they'll be moved into that other retirement plan. So that wouldn't impact this year's budget, right? Some of the actuarial analysis are not in this year's budget, but it is also very common for the actuary, once a new... They look in January for next year's budget, and it's based on last year's activity, if that makes sense. So it is common that some of these things will be considered next year. I'm not sure. That's not the bill with the interest. The only difference would be where they have to actually pay interest in that sixth year. And I think they only had... But that's, I think that, I think I'm jumping ahead because I think that's the next bill when we're talking about interest. But as far as the actuarially determined recommended pension amount that they consider when they decide to allocate pension costs out to the departments, that's reviewed each year by what's in effect as of that date, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion on Bill 54-20? Mr. Barron, did your virtual table have anything to add to the bill?
Please vote in favor. This is the result of the collective bargaining.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 54-20. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We've had no submissions of written testimony on Bill 54-20.
Thank you. We did not have any members of the public sign up to speak on this bill. Madam Auditor.
Yeah, I just wanted to add too, that in the majority of these cases, these employees are given a very limited period for drop those people in there, and that they're being converted, the new ones are being converted to the Employees Retirement Plan. So I will say this, that in the long run, it should net out savings. In the short run, not as much, if that makes sense. I don't know if that makes sense.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill Number 54-20 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 54-20.
Bill Number 54-20, An Ordinance Concerning Pension Deferred Retirement Option Program: Detention Officers and Deputy Sheriff's Retirement Plan: Employees Retirement Plan: Eligibility Participants.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 54-20.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 54-20 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 55-20.
Bill Number 55-20, An Ordinance Concerning Pensions Deferred Retirement Option Program: Term of Participation Period: Limitations on Interest.
Thank you. This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the Administration. Joining me at the virtual table from Personnel is Ms. Dickerson and Ms. Bedowski from Budget, Mr. Teroux from Fire, Division Chief Lane from Law, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. This is the second drop bill. The purpose of Bill 55-20 is to amend the pension code for certain county employees. Battalion chiefs require appointing authority approval for year six of the drop and become eligible to earn interest in year six of the drop. Police sergeants and police lieutenants no longer require appointing authority approval to extend drop participation for year six. We will offer an amendment at the appropriate time to address a concern the auditor raised in her blue letter. Ms. Dickerson and her team are here to answer the hard questions. So with that, I'll hold off to talk on the amendment until the appropriate time.
Are there any questions of the council for the Administration? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 55-20. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We've had no submissions of written testimony on Bill 55-20.
Thank you. We did not receive any members of the public to sign up to speak on this as well. The public hearing on Bill Number 55-20 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 55-20.
Bill Number 55-20, An Ordinance Concerning Pensions Deferred Retirement Option Program: Term of Participation Period: Limitations on Interest.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, this is a good time to offer that amendment?
I believe you actually have to offer it, Madam Chair.
Oh.
I'd be happy to.
There is an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
I will hold to, we have it up on screen. Okay. This amendment, number one, this amendment provides the rate of interest in the sixth year of the drop for fire battalion chiefs.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Lacy, so moved.
Is there a second?
Rodvian, second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Barron, did you want to discuss this amendment?
I'd be happy to, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the Administration. The auditor pointed out another subsection in the code that needs to be changed for the battalion chiefs to earn interest in the sixth year, and that sets the rate for the sixth year. This amendment corrects our initial oversight.
Is there any questions regarding this amendment? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Mr. Barron, just to clarify, the 4.25% guaranteed rate of interest for the drop program, that's the same rate of interest that's received by all other participants in the drop across the county. Is that right?
I'm going to defer to our experts on the panel. I'm not 100% sure myself. Ms. Dickerson or Mr. Teroux?
I believe Ms. Bedowski might have that exact figure for the others. Sherri Dickerson, Personnel Officer.
And Bedowski, System Personnel Officer. Yes, that rate of interest is similar, yes.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I don't see any further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Trupuski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you. Bill Number 55-20 as amended will be heard on September 21, 2020. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 56-20.
Bill Number 56-20, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Acquisition of Real Property by Gift.
Thank you. This is an administration bill as well. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the Administration. Joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Romans and Ms. Harris. I believe Ms. Harris might have had some audio problems, but maybe they've been resolved. And Ms. Nederer from Office of Law. A constituent would like to donate 0.83 acres of property to the county. The property is undeveloped and forested within the critical area near Herring Bay. This fits with our policy. The Director of the Environmental Policy for the Administration is in support of this donation for tree plantings, and the property will be held by the Department of Recreation and Parks. A Phase 1 environmental site assessment was completed in February, which identified no recognized hazards on the parcel, and future maintenance costs for the property should be minimal. The budget officer has reviewed and determined no fiscal impact per our code. The council in your packet has been provided a map of the surrounding area. If the council approves, real estate will proceed with receiving this property as a gift according to code requirements. At the appropriate time, the Administration will request two amendments to address a couple of clarifications and incorrect error that was identified by Madam Auditor. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions of the council for the Administration regarding 56-20? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 56-20. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We have received no submissions of written testimony on Bill 56-20.
Thank you. And it does not appear that we had anyone sign up to speak on this bill. The public hearing on Bill Number 56-20 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 56-20.
Bill Number 56-20, An Ordinance Concerning Purchasing Acquisition of Real Property by Gift.
Is there any further discussion? As Mr. Barron stated, there are two amendments. We'll let Amendment Number One come up on the screen, and then, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this technical amendment correctly identifies the page number in county plat records where the real property that is the subject of Bill 56-20 is found.
May I have a motion to adopt Amendment Number One?
Councilman Pruski, motion to adopt.
May I have a second?
Rodvian, second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? On the amendment, excuse me.
Pete Barron with the Administration. The amendment is technical and corrective. Please move the amendment.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Thank you. Moving along to Amendment Number Two, we'll let Amendment Number Two get on the screen, and then, Madam Secretary, we'll read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two, this amendment clarifies the public purposes for the property being gifted to the county.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt the amendment. Rodvian.
Is there a second?
Councilman Pruski, second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the Amendment Number Two?
Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the Administration. Amendment Two was drafted in response to a question from Madam Auditor regarding... regarding a portion of the bill that identifies the square footage amount that will be used for mitigation. This amendment removes any reference to the square footage utilized for mitigation, as it is the intent to put the entire parcel in the mitigation bank, and as the square footage that will be used at a later date is currently indeterminate.
Okay, is there any discussion on the amendment? Madam Secretary, please call the roll for Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Trupuski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two is adopted.
Now, it's my, Madam Secretary, it's my understanding that was not a technical amendment, and this bill therefore will be heard as amended on September 21st, 2020. Is that correct?
I do not have this listed as a technical amendment, so.
Okay. Bill number 56-20, as amended, will be heard on September 21st, 2020. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title.
Madam Chair, my apologies. I thought that at this point we were going to recess because the live transcriptionist does need to take short breaks after a certain period of time.
Yes, ma'am, you are correct. My apologies. We're gonna do this quickly. May I have a motion to recess for five minutes?
Lacy, so moved.
Is there a second?
Volkey, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. We will return at, why don't we make it an even eight o'clock? We're gonna return at eight o'clock. Thank you, everybody. The council stands in recess. It is eight o'clock. We are getting ready to start again, but I'd like to see all my council members.
Madam Chair, would you like me to do a roll call?
That would be great.
Okay. Mr. Pruski?
Still present.
Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Ms. Rodvian?
Present.
Ms. Hare?
Present.
Ms. Lacy?
Present.
Mr. Volkey?
Present.
Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Madam Chair, all council are back from recess.
Thank you so much. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 57-20.
Bill number 5720, An Ordinance Concerning Licensing and Zoning Manufactured Mobile Homes Located Outside a Mobile Home Park.
Thank you. This is Mr. Pruski's bill. Mr. Pruski, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna be very brief since we had a work session on this. I do want to read a couple of things. I'm gonna request the council to hold this bill for a variety of reasons. But first of all, this bill states that an RA zone property, manufactured home, we placed on the property in a little bit of a single-family home. Under the bill, the manufactured home must meet all safety requirements, as stated, that we discussed in the work session. Also, I want to be clear, because this question was raised. I received confirmation from the law office and other entities that existing law that there would be only one manufactured home for residents to be able to build on a parcel of land. So if somebody wanted to have multiple pieces, they'd have to subdivide and go through that process or change their zoning. I do have a request to hold this bill, and I'll do that after the public hearing at the appropriate time. The reason for that is I had some folks kind of reach out. And this does make sense. Certainly, we're going through the GDP right now. We have a lot of questions about land use and other things, and my intention was not to mess with that, but to solve a constituent issue. We had a constituent who has 66 acres of RA land, was going to purchase this home, was gonna put it on, submitted an application to permits, planning and zoning, and was denied. And so certainly, we're just trying to solve that issue. And I know there was some concern about the number of parcels and things, so we are gonna be putting some further reductions on, but I do want to wait until Monday, September 21st. But again, I'll make that motion at the appropriate time. At that point, I'll stop and go to public hearing if anybody has any questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Would the administration like to weigh in at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration, happy to make a couple of quick comments. Joining me at the virtual table from OPZ is Ms. Rhodes, from IMP, Mr. Africa, and still coming back from retirement, Mr. Bryant, and from law, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. The administration is comfortable with this bill, understand the intent of the sponsor, and appreciate the attempt to solve a particular problem. These types of structures are, have changed a lot over the years, and actually stayed in one. I think it was pre-COVID, it was last year. It's quite nice. The RA district is appropriate because lot sizes are generally larger, which increases separation between residential structures. And I understand that we will be holding the bill to clarify and ensure that is the case. So with that, the administration has no concerns with this bill, assuming we are able to address the concerns that the sponsor articulated. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Do I have a, Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just actually wanted to say thank you to Councilman Pruski for being willing to hold the bill and take some of these concerns that we've heard into consideration. Obviously, there's quite a bit of RA in District Seven, and so I just, I really appreciate your willingness to work on this, so we can solve your constituents' problem and address the other concerns.
I see no other questions from my colleagues. We will now open the public hearing on Bill number 57-20. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have had 12 submissions of written testimony, which we shared with the council and posted on the county website.
Thank you. We will now hear from members of the public who signed up ahead of time. We have one person signed up to speak on this bill. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address for the record. We will begin with Mr. Ashley Millard. Mr. Millard, are you with us? Maybe it's Millard. Mr. Millard, are you with us?
Madam Chair, I have been informed that the speaker has left the meeting.
Okay, thank you so much. That is helpful. The public hearing on Bill number 57-20 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 57-20.
Bill number 5720, An Ordinance Concerning Licensing and Zoning Manufactured Mobile Homes Located Outside a Mobile Home Park.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. As stated earlier, I would like to make a motion to hold this bill till Monday, September 21st, 2020 meeting. Thank you.
Hare, second.
I have a motion to hold the vote on Bill 57-20 until September 21st, 2020. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill 57-20 is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 58-20.
Bill number 5820, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Pay Schedule Pay Increase Police Department Employees.
Thank you. This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the council. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Dickerson from Personnel, Mr. Teru from Budget, Acting Deputy Chief Simpson and Acting Major Silverman from Police, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from Office of Law. Bill 5820 enacts pay schedules for police majors consistent with the FY 21 budget that was recently passed. Thank you to the council members that identified the issue of pay compression and brought forth the correction in the budget. This bill implements the council's will.
Thank you. Are there any questions from my colleagues on the council? Ms. Lacy?
Comment more than a question. Thank you all who worked on this bill to bring this together. It was, we felt, a very important issue and inequity to address during the budget season, and even though we were making lots of hard choices during that time, in my mind, this was one of the easiest choices that we had to make and something that we should always have an eye toward accomplishing. So thank you, everyone who brought this bill forward. I'm very pleased to support it.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. This is Allison Pickard, Chair, District Two. I'd like to echo my colleagues' comments and just sort of say, anything worth doing is worth doing done right the first time. So I really appreciate the administration looking at this compression issue and taking care of it in the 2020, 2021 budget. So with that, is there any other questions or comments regarding Bill 58-20? We will now open the public hearing on Bill number 58-20. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we have received no submissions of written testimony on Bill 5820.
Thank you. We did not have any members of the public signed up to speak. The public hearing on Bill number 58-20 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please call, please read the title of Bill number 58-20.
Bill number 5820, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Pay Schedule Pay Increase Police Department Employees.
Last call for discussion on Bill number 58-20. Thank you, everyone. Madam Secretary, please call the, please call the roll on Bill number 58-20.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill 5820 is passed.
Thank you, and thank you to our fine police officers who stuck it out this meeting to not say anything about the bill. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 59-20.
Bill number 5920, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Positions in the Classified Service.
This is also an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. From Office of Personnel, sticking with me is Ms. Dickerson and also a repeat customer, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from Office of Law. Bill 59-20 is needed to update the code due to an inconsistency in a county job title. In the annual budget ordinance, the personnel summary for the police department included one position, a job classification called Assistant Police Director. There is no such job classification. If you recall, Bill number 48-20 created a job classification called Police Fiscal Operations and Management Administrator. This job classification is not included in the personnel summary for the police department in the fiscal '21 budget. The purpose of 5920 is to remove Assistant Police Director position from the police department's personnel summary and to add a Police Fiscal Operations and Management Administrator position to the police department's personnel summary for the fiscal '21 budget. It is the same job, different title. Please move the bill.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Mr. Barron, I guess, just some backstory on this. Interestingly, I remember during the budget, Chief Altamari wanted this position specifically to maintain continuity at the top of the police department in the event that the top brass at the police department was to turn over, specifically if the chief was to turn over. And presciently, he, I guess, must have seen what was coming down the line, knowing that he was not gonna be there much longer. So it's interesting that this position was funded and it's there. With that said, I guess my question would be, I get that this is a semantic change, but how did this happen? How did it go that there was a position put in the budget that didn't exist, and there was no job description for it? And then when the job description was created in 4820, it was called something different than what was in the budget? I'm just trying to understand the process on this.
That's a fair question, Councilman Volkey, but that's not entirely accurate. There was a job description, there was a pay scale, there was all the things that you need. It just was labeled Assistant Police Director. So it is a bit of a semantic change. I can't tell you exactly where the name got changed. I don't know that entire history, but the, there was a position that was funded in the budget that included the job description and all the duties and whatnot that go along with it that is identical. It is just the title, the job title, that there was an inconsistency on. So it's human error.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any questions of the administration on Bill number 59-20? Seeing none. We will now open the public hearing on Bill number 59-20. Madam Secretary, do we have any items of testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we've received no submissions of written testimony on Bill 5920.
Thank you. We did not have any members of the public sign up to speak. The public hearing on Bill number 59-20 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 59-20.
Bill number 5920, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Positions in the Classified Service.
Is there any further discussion on this bill? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 59-20.
Bill number, I'm sorry. Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian? I'm sorry, Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill number 5920 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 60-20.
Bill number 6020, An Ordinance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Codes and Supplements.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Finding that unmute button is hard. Pete Barron with the administration, thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me at the virtual table is Mr. Africa from IMP, as well as Mr. Bryant from Office of Law, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. The purpose of the bill, of Bill 60-20, is to make necessary modifications to the county code Article 15, the construction and property maintenance codes and the construction code supplement to the county code. The majority of the changes- The majority of the changes to the article are updates to a new edition of the international codes. This bill will change the current version of the code from 2015 to the 2018 International Building Code, the International Residential Code, the International Plumbing Code, the International Mechanical Code, the International Fuel Gas Code, the International Energy Conservation Code, the international existing building code, the NFPA 70 National Electrical Code, and finally, the adoption of the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. The International Swimming Pool and Spa Code is a new adoption in addition to Article 15 this year. The code has gone through two cycles of code changes on the national level. This document brings all the design criteria that has been spread throughout the other international codes and place the requirements into a single code for use in the design, evaluation, and inspection of swimming pools. This code has been in development over the past nine years with input from the Association of Pool and Spa Professionals, the code officials from around the United States, and those who actually produce and construct these type of aquatic vessels. We are mandated by the state of Maryland to adopt the code within a one-year period of the time from when the state completes their adoption under the Maryland Performance Standard. That date was back in March of this year, so we are a little bit behind. With that, Mr. Bryant and Mr. Africa are here to help with the technical questions. This is quite a long bill. You'll notice there's an addendum to Madam Auditor's blue letter and attachment to Madam Auditor's blue letter, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Mr. Barron, when you indicated the March date, were you referring to the date that the state adopted the new versions of the code or the date that we were to have done this?
Mr. Bryant or Mr. Africa, correct me if I'm wrong. It was the date we were supposed to have done this by.
Okay, so we're already six months behind on that date. I just want to make sure before I go any further that I understand what we're talking about.
They are not correcting me, so I believe I was correct.
All right, great. Thank you.
Can I add, Mr. Volkey, basically held it?
Mr. Africa, please state your.
Greg Africa, Director of Inspections and Permits. Mr. Volkey, in the state law, basically, it's giving the chance to the local jurisdictions to adopt the 2018 version of the international codes and also include any kind of amendments which are in particular to the local jurisdiction. If the local jurisdiction does not act on it, the state will require the county to adopt wholesale all the 2018 codes. So although we're late, the state recognizes that. And also in terms of what's happened in COVID, and this is basically, a lot of jurisdictions have not adopted it. So it's better late than never is basically what we're doing right now. Thank you.
And, Madam Chair, if I may, I neglected to mention we do have a technical amendment that we will be offering at the appropriate time.
Sure. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Mr. Africa, you mentioned, I think, just now that some of this is sort of just an adoption of the 2018 codes, but some of this may have further amendments specific to our county. Can you help point out for me which pieces are not from the 2018 international code provisions, but rather are amendments from the county?
For example, there, I can't cite the exact code, but it has to do with the residential code. And Mr. Bryant can chime in here. There are certain types of soils in the county that are not going to work with the way the code is written. So for example, discharges from the downspouts, we have special requirements in the county for making it spaced far enough from the home and also to discharge far enough from the property line so it does not directly discharge into your neighbor. So that's one example of an amendment to the code that we think would benefit the citizens and their private property by amending it for certain distance requirements from the property line.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, may I ask a follow-up?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. So, Mr. Africa, I appreciate that example. I'm trying to understand every instance in the bill where that's different, and maybe I just haven't seen that or I missed it, and my apologies. But at first, I thought we were just updating our code per the international code and not necessarily understanding that there are some additional changes we're making. And for that, I'm curious what input we got from where and how those decisions were made in terms of developing this, because I think this has really widespread implications, some of which may be very good, but it has a lot of implications.
Yes. Bill, Mr. Bryant could also expound on some of the other amendments that we have here. Bill, I'll yield to you.
Sure. Councilwoman, several of the things that we had, we never had a point of discharge where we could discharge gutters and downspouts. We've consistently had a problem with where that discharges. We made that discharge very much the same as a sump pump discharge in the yard, but it has to discharge with outside of five foot from the property line. A couple of the other items we did, we changed the requirements in the National Electrical Code for GFI protection in the basement on sump pumps. The reason we did that, because the sump pumps themselves inherently have a quick startup time, which actually defeats the GFI. Well, it kicks the GFI in, and it results in sometimes when that sump pump kicks in, that discharge or the GFI trips itself. Therefore, the sump pump doesn't kick in. Therefore, you end up flooding the basement. So that was a compromise that we had made with the industry to allow GFI, to not allow GFI protection on that sump pump circuit. We also changed the disconnect heights on solar systems to be a maximum of six foot seven inches to the top of the disconnect, which is predominantly we use for normal. What happens in some of the subdivisions and some of the items, the contractors reverse the panel so that the main breaker is at the bottom level and the rest of the breakers are at the top. And at that point in time, those breakers are all within the six foot seven. They may have four or five blanks in that panel box. Because they set that too tall, then the disconnecting means or the breaker itself is above that six foot seven mark. So we said that everything has to be that six foot seven mark. We also changed the actual plumbing code to require labeling of soil and waste water and grease lines in a commercial building. They are all separate lines. A lot of times in commercial buildings, those lines are tapped to make connections that shouldn't be tapped for grease lines and so forth on down the line. So we qualified that or made that much clearer in the code to say that in a commercial building, you have to identify the stormwater lines. You have to identify the drain and waste lines. And you have to identify the grease lines, which keeps you from making the wrong connections into the wrong lines. Those are about the major differences that we made in the code. Those are the major, what I would call substantive changes to the code.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3, again. I just want to make sure that I understand correctly in the auditor's blue letter, one of the points that was noted was the notification that's required to be sent to the contractors who are affected by these changes. Was that sent out about a week and a half ago? Is that right?
The actual boards and commissions in charge of their duties, they were notified earlier this year because we all knew that we were going to be adopting the special code. Drafts were performed and given to them at that point in time. Until the bill hit and we got the bill, then we sent out notifications to the boards and commissions. And until the council takes actions on the bill, we can't inform the general contractors that here's what's located, here is what is the code. So as soon as we adopt the code, then we can send out that notification to all the building, the plumbing, the electrical, the mechanical, the fuel gas contractors to say, okay, here's 60 days. Here's the new regulations, and here's where we are.
Thank you for that. So Nathan Volkey, District 3, again. At what point do the contractors weigh in? Because I had one constituent reach out to me with proposed amendments to the codes. And then I heard from the Maryland Building Industry Association today that they also may have some comments on the proposed adoption of the codes. So when do the affected groups get the notice? As I understood it, I think it was the 24th of August. Some form of notice was sent to some contractors, but I don't know exactly what that was.
That is correct. The August 24th date, all the boards and commissions were notified. The state actually has to adopt the building code, the 2018 building code, within 18 months of the publication of the building code itself. They had ample opportunity to go to the state to make the state aware of any concerns that they had. Once the state adopts that bill or whatever, then we have 12 months to go from there. We've done that. The concerns, or I believe the one that you're talking about, about energy code and air changes per hour, that can be done through a modification or a alternate means and methods to the codes. So that availability to that issue is still in the code. So that is not taken away. That is something that we don't need to actually really amend because there are other alternative measures available to that individual. Howard County, once again, they identified that as being an alternate method of method, but they didn't change their code. Hartford County, they actually amended the code. So it's either six of one or the other. We can always allow for those amendments to come in or those modifications to come in and look at it by point-by-point situation.
That makes perfect sense. Again, Nathan Volkey, District 3, thank you. As Madam Chair said a few minutes ago, that which is worth doing is worth doing right the first time. So I want to make sure that we're getting this right the first time as opposed to coming back and constantly being forced to revisit this section of the code. So with that said, at the appropriate time, I'm going to make a motion to hold this bill to provide more time for public input on it, because as I understand it, the bill does not expire until 23 October, and we have a number of meetings between now and then. So I'll make that motion. I just wanted to clarify in terms of timing where we sat with the state. And it looks like because we're already behind, I'm not sure how another month or so of delay is going to create a major problem for us. So just to let all my colleagues know, that's what I'll be asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey. This is Allison Pickard, District 2. I just want to commend Mr. Bryant on his hard work on this bill and for taking time. I believe you met with me before you actually retired, but you did spend considerable time with myself and my legislative aide to go through the changes quite thoroughly and to also discuss the energy issue that's been brought up this evening. So I'm quite comfortable with where this bill is. I have had all my issues addressed with that lengthy meeting, and I appreciate your expertise. And you will certainly be missed as you retire. And I'm excited to see you enjoy your retirement years. I know a little bit about what your plans are. I just want to take this time to really thank you, because I know this is a bit of your swan song, and I'm so grateful that you're here to talk with us with our questions. And again, I'm grateful that you took the time to meet with me and answer all of my questions, even in recess. As we've noted, this bill was introduced on July 20th. There's been a lot of opportunity for the industry to weigh in. The code is also a living document. And if there are any little issues that individual constituents want to bring up, there's an opportunity at any time. Mr. Africa has his hand raised, so you have the floor, sir.
Yes. Great. Thank you very much. Greg Africa, Director of Inspection and Permits. I would just also add a note here that many of our permit applicants, the design consulting firms, have already started using 2018. In fact, we have already received permit applications pre-COVID on the anticipation that the 2018 standards will be used, since the consultants also work in different counties and even in Virginia and DC, that we're seeing more and more folks using the 2018 code. So I just want to make that note. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I thank Mr. Africa and Mr. Bryant for their comments, and this is in no way intended to diminish the hard work that Mr. Bryant has put in. I would note that since this bill was introduced on July 20, we have not yet had a work session on it. I would very much like to have a work session on it before we vote. I think it would be helpful just for a little bit more detail. And I would say to Mr. Africa that the fact that people are already anticipating and using the 2018 code is a good thing. But I think that means we have the time to certainly have a work session on this and make sure that everyone's concerns or questions or comments are addressed. And Mr. Bryant, again, thank you. I will echo Chairwoman Pickard's comments that I appreciate all your hard work and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to first start, Mr. Bryant, I echo the sentiments of my two colleagues before me. You are the go-to person with a wealth of knowledge, and you will be missed. I don't know who I'm going to email now. I'm kidding, but you will be missed. I do want to also say that some questions came my way, and as Councilwoman Hare said, our last meeting in July was when this was introduced, and we were in legislative recess. I would hope that out of just consideration for some concerns that I personally would like to talk through at our next work group to land in a place where we could get a 7-0 vote would be greatly appreciated. And I just wanted to ask prior to that, there's no penalty at the state level. I mean, at this point, as Councilman Volkey said, we're six months behind. If Mr. Africa or Mr. Bryant want to confirm that.
Other than the penalty is that we have to specifically adopt the state code, no. But keeping in mind, the state code does not legislate any fees that are currently there. So therefore, since there are no fees located within the state code, we could be a little bit of a legal issue.
Madam Chair, if I may just follow up really quickly?
Ms. Fiedler?
I would assume, and I'm not talking directly with the state on this, but I would assume if they are understanding that the state and counties are dealing with COVID delays and operations and deadlines are a little different, we too have that at the council level and would extend a little grace to us. So that's all. Thank you.
Are there questions? Oh, Ms. Schuet?
Thank you. Linda Schuet, Attorney for the County Council. Mr. Bryant, I've known you for over 10 years. So how could it possibly be that you've retired and nobody told me? How could that be?
Guess you're not on the mailing list, my dear.
So I was around when the county first adopted the need to put sprinklers in, and it was somewhat of a controversial issue. As I recall, there was something akin to a grandfathering provision that was actually stated as an exception to the requirement or certain. stated as an exception to the requirement or certain situations. And I guess my question is, it's really two questions. Upon the effective date of the bill, this will apply to all construction that is currently going on, right?
No, ma'am. Only who come in for a permit. The permit, once you apply for the permit, that is the effective date of the code. So if I applied tomorrow, I will be under the 2012 code. If I apply, say, 75 days from now, I will be under the 2018 code at that point in time.
Okay.
At this point, it's application date.
May I ask my real question? So basically, the code itself basically includes a grandfathering clause. If you filed and received your permit, you go under whatever law you were under at the time you filed the permit. That's question number one. Then the second one is, is there anything in any of this that is akin to the sprinkler controversy that might need extra attention?
To your answer to your question number one, question number one is yes. You apply today, you're currently under the 2015 code. Until the bill takes effect and you apply after that bill, you would not be under the 2018 code. As to akin to the single-family dwelling, as far as suppression goes, there were no changes in that code. So therefore, what we adopted in 2015 for code for suppression for single-family houses will continue forward in the 2018 code.
Thank you.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant, does the same sort of automatic grandfathering apply to a permit extension?
Yes, ma'am.
It does. So if I had...
If you applied for a permit in, say, 2000, let's go through, 2009, and you get to a point where you have to extend that permit, that permit is still good underneath whatever provision of code that we adopted when you first issued the permit. So if you applied in 2009, it would have been the 2003 code, so that continues forward.
Okay, thank you. And then this comment is for Ms. Schuet. Are you referring to the residential care facilities within a dwelling that's on page nine of the bill? Is that what you're asking about on the sprinkler systems?
I wasn't asked, I know about that provision. I wasn't asking specifically about it. This is Linda Schuet, Attorney for the County Council. So no, I wasn't referring to anything in particular.
Okay, never mind. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from my colleagues? With that, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 60-20. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We've had no submissions of written testimony on Bill 60-20.
And we did not receive anybody signed up to speak on Bill Number 60-20. Therefore, the public hearing on Bill Number 60-20 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 60-20.
Bill Number 60-20: An Ordinance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Codes and Supplements.
I believe there's, at this time, we should read... Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
This is up. Amendment Number One: This technical amendment removes a corrected reference that did not need to be corrected.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number...
Councilman Pruski, motion to adopt.
May I have a second?
Lacy, second.
Is there any discussion on Amendment Number One? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Technical Amendment Number One.
Mr. Pruski? Ms. Fiedler? Ms. Rodvian?
Hi.
Ms. Hare? Ms. Lacy? Mr. Volkey? Ms. Pickard? Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this point, I would make a motion to hold Bill 60-20 for a vote until the October 5, 2020 meeting. I've already indicated the reasons why.
Is there a second?
Fiedler, second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill 60-20 until October 5.
Mr. Pruski? Oh, I'm sorry.
You're muted.
I'm sorry. This is Councilman Pruski. I had a question for the administration on the motion.
Oh, my apologies.
I understand that there could be questions answered, but I want to ask Mr. Bryant or Mr. Africa that further amendments could be put on. Again, we're not in compliance, so I'm just trying to understand. I hear my colleagues, they want to hear, but also I don't want to be not collecting fees and not being compliant. So I would like to hear your opinion on, you know, your thoughts on holding the bill. I mean, it doesn't harm, no foul. I'd like to hear your honest opinion. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this is Pete Barron with the administration. I defer to Mr. Bryant and Mr. Africa to give their opinion.
Mr. Africa?
Greg Africa, Department of Inspections and Permits. My honest opinion, I think we have done a good thorough job about this, this bill. And in my opinion, the community is aware of what's coming down the pike. The bill's been on the books since July. I think we should move forward with the bill as written and amended. Thank you.
Mr. Bryant, did you have anything to add at this time?
Sure. Mr. Pruski, Councilman Pruski, just to answer your questions a little bit. When the state adopts their bill in their administrative portions of it, they keep what's in the code as far as the administration portion. If you see that what we have done in our administrative issues or Chapter One, our playbook, we have made very good sense out of that playbook, created codes, created specifications, and actually charges and fees in that. If we had to succumb to what the state is, then a lot of our enforcement issues, a lot of our permitting issues, and a lot of our fee issues would actually go away. I believe that what we have in front of us is a very good bill. I've worked an entire 30 years to get us to this point, and I believe that the bill is probably the best bill you're going to see coming out of this distinction. So I think you can move forward with the bill. You know, once again, it is a living document. The 2018 codes are a living document. They are developed by code officials across the United States in a 36-month interval where we take testimony on every individual code. And the key point is that any of the code changes that go into the code are specifically voted on by active code officials. There are no outside interests. There are no issues where individuals have a vested interest in advancing those codes. It's all voted by the membership of the International Code Council, and there's 64,000 members for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion, Mr. Barron?
Pete Barron with the administration. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Bryant personally. He's been fantastic to me as I came into my role in this administration and really will be, his expertise and steady hand will be missed, but it's well-deserved retirement, sir. So thank you for everything you've done. With that, I want to echo Mr. Bryant's comments and ask you to move the bill tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to remind the council, this is Allison Pickard, Chair, District 2, I do want to remind the council that we have packed agendas, which is why we've moved these meetings to 6:00 PM, oh, 6:00 AM. That'd be even better. But, you know, if it's the will of the council, we will see how this vote goes. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill 60-20 until October 5.
Mr. Pruski?
In honor of Mr. Bryant, nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill 60-20 until October 5 is defeated.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number...
Madam, yes, Madam Chair, since it was a technical amendment, we should move to calling the roll on the vote for Bill 60-20 as amended.
Yes. Please call the roll on Bill 60-20 as amended. My apologies.
Second. Mr. Pruski? Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, Bill Number 60-20 as amended is passed.
Now, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 61-20.
Bill Number 61-20: An Ordinance Concerning Public Works Utilities.
This is also an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
One day, I'm going to get quicker on my mute button. Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me from the Department of Public Works is Ms. Henry and Mr. Thompson from Law, Ms. Kenny. I'm just checking to make sure everybody's on the screen. Thank you. The purpose of Bill 61-20 is to make corrections and changes to various provisions of Article 13 pertaining to utilities and water and wastewater procedures. The bill provides clarifying language for backflow prevention, which is vital and necessary to protect the county's drinking water supply. Improperly functioning or lack of backflow, of a backflow preventer can cause tainted liquids to backflow into the water supply and cause contamination of the county's drinking water supply. Other changes in the bill include revision to change the timeframe for replacement of a water meter on a private water source from every 10 years to every 15 years, to delete language that authorizes back billing for water or wastewater usage only where there is an omission or mistake of a customer, and would allow back billing for a period not to exceed three years for any billing that is incorrect or not made. Revised provisions allowing for waivers of water and wastewater usage bills for uninhabitable and certain unoccupied properties. Increases the amount that DPW may reimburse to a residential customer for property damage as a result of a sewer system backup into a customer's home. Require that whenever water service is turned off for a lack of a backflow preventer, a service charge of $50 be applied, and meter test is added to the list of items that are subject to a charge of $35. With that, we ask you to move the bill this evening, and the team here is happy to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Mr. Barron, I don't know if this is a question for you or if maybe this is a question for Ms. Henry at DPW, but why are we trying to allow backcharging of residents for a mistake three years later?
I'm going to defer to the experts at DPW.
Hi, this is Karen Henry, Assistant Director, Public Works. The reason we're asking to do this has a lot to do with fairness of who should really be paying the bill. So what typically happens that's caused us to want this change is there are times when meters are misassigned, especially when we're doing a big community. This happened recently at Tanyard Springs. There's, you know, hundreds of meters being put into that community, and sometimes they'll be assigned to the wrong homeowner. They've gotten switched, and the accounts will be, so let's say, I, you know, it's my house, but I'm getting your, you know, Mrs. Hare's meter. You have a family of five. I live by myself. So what happens is, once I realize, well, I'm getting these high bills, so I complain to the county, we do our research, we find that the meters were inappropriately assigned, and then we will give me a refund for anything I paid or credit for anything I've overpaid. However, you were getting that water, and you would not get a refund. You would not be billed because we can't, by the way the code is currently written. So in that case, what happens is the rest of the county, basically, that all the ratepayers are paying for that extra water that you're getting and you didn't appropriately pay for, that we credited to me. So does that make sense?
Ms. Hare, did you have a follow-up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. How often, what's the magnitude of this issue? How often does this happen, and what's the total dollar value that we're talking here?
So for that specific instance, I think it happens probably twice a year that we find that, but we may find multiple meters. So for example, Tanyard Springs, there was about 10 different accounts that were incorrectly assigned. We're looking at basically, unfortunately, the way that finance handles the billing, when they do credits, it's just one code in their MUNIS system that says that folks were credited, and we're not able to pull a report that shows exactly that they were credited because of erroneous meter assignments. So we're looking at what the overall, they give about $1 million a year in credits, but that can vary. All the reasons for that vary. So we're looking at a percentage of those particular credits, and we're looking at maybe $15,000 a year.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3. Ms. Henry, this is probably a question for you, but I guess it's also one we have to grapple with on the council. To me, the situation that you're describing, I think, almost strikes me as like in the game Monopoly, bank error in your favor. That's effectively what happens to a certain degree with this, is that when the county screws up and does this incorrectly, you get something for free. I don't have a problem with the county correcting it to the benefit of the homeowner. My problem is the idea that the county, years later, is going to come back and correct it to the detriment of the homeowner who potentially had no idea that there was even a problem. Maybe they realized it, maybe they didn't. So this back billing idea to me is very problematic. And again, it's one of the reasons that I raised three possible amendments with the administration over the weekend when I noted this issue, and it's why I'm going to be asking that we hold this bill as well so that we have a chance to possibly offer some amendments to deal with this. But I understand the point that you're going after, but for me, it's not a policy point that I agree with. And I think there are some very good things in this bill, but if this remains in the bill, I'm going to have to vote against it because I disagree with this concept fundamentally, as well as a few other things in the bill that I'd like to see us amend as well. So I appreciate you clarifying that and giving us a solid answer, which frankly is something that's often elusive up here. So thank you for hitting the nail on the head and giving us a good answer to the question.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Barron?
Just to continue on Councilman Volkey's analogy, in Monopoly, the money comes from the bank. Here, it comes from internal county taxpayers. Here, it comes from Anarodol County taxpayers.
Ms. Fiedler? Madam Auditor, you have your hand raised.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, but this also allows the county to back bill when it's the customer's mistake, which they currently can't do as well. I just wanna make sure that was.
This is Karen Henry, Assistant Director, Public Works. Actually, currently, if it's the customer error, we can back bill. However, proving a customer error, I mean, we are the ones that bill. So proving a customer error is pretty much nonexistent. I mean, we're not really even sure why it was written that way, but, you know, before my time.
Maybe it was an error. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District 5. This question is from Ms. Henry. When you look back at circumstances, or the county has made the error, if we were to have the system in place, looking back, what is the highest amount a single homeowner could have had requested to pay? And what is the smallest? If you had to give ballparks, that's fine. Understanding that this would come out of kind of the blue for someone who hasn't dealt with that year in three years at maximum.
I, I don't, I just am kind of giving you a wild estimate, so it's not based on anything I've looked at recently, but I think it's probably an average credit of about $500. So I'm gonna say that that bill would probably be, on average, 500 billed back to another customer. But I would like to, on the Tanyard Springs example, just to give you an example, it was the builder, the builder there has some ornamental displays and different things. So what happened on that switch meter, this is just, again, one community, one example, is the builder was being, getting actually basically no bills, whereas the community association was getting high bills. And they really, you know, were the ones that found that there was some sort of issue in that case. Just so, that's one example, it can be many different things that go on, I mean. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on Bill 61-20? Ms. Rodvian?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lisa Rodvian, District 6. This is probably a question, again, for Ms. Henry, so thank you for taking all her questions. If a, a property owner is informed that indeed they have been underbilled and that they owe for, you know, they owe whatever amount, you know, we'll say $300, what is there, is there opportunity for them to sort of spread it out over time? Or is it due immediately? And I apologize if, yeah, so what, tell me what you do in terms of expecting repayment.
Yes, again, this is Karen Henry, Assistant Director, Public Works. So they can request to go into a payment plan that the Office of Finance can approve, and they can pay monthly, they can pay over a year. They just work that out with the Office of Finance and whatever kind of payments that they can make. So they have that opportunity.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District 3, again. Considering Tanyard is in my district, and I know some of the folks who were impacted by this, who are actually contacting me during this meeting, I understand it was something like $10,000 that was credited back to the HOA in this case, because there was an error with the billing. Is that your understanding too, Ms. Henry?
I'm sorry, but I don't recall the exact amount, but that sounds, you know, within the ballpark.
Okay, yeah, the reason I bring it up is, again, we're not talking about insignificant sums of money. I mean, $10,000 is quite a lot for most of the residents in our county.
Well, again, that one was the builders, and it was quite a lot. They were all of the different properties that they were watering during the building. I mean, it was significant irrigation systems that, that we're talking about, which, if you have an irrigation system and you're paying for county water, you know that your bill, it's quite an expensive endeavor.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I don't see any further questions regarding, oh, Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District 7. I'll make this very quick also, I just, this is the same issue with the last bill in that it was introduced on July 20th, so we haven't yet had a work session on it. And particularly for this one, with some of these fees and some of the potential, I just, I, given the potential for charging homeowners money at a, when they're least expecting it, even if, you know, if they don't know, and we're asking them suddenly and saying, hey, for the last year, we've underbilled you, and now you owe us an extra $1,000, that, I would really like to have a work session on this one. That's, that's all, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other flag raised from my colleagues, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 61-20. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, we've had no submissions of written testimony on Bill 61-20.
Thank you. And we did not have any members of the public sign up to speak. Therefore, the public hearing on Bill Number 61-20 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 61-20.
Bill Number 61-20, An Ordinance Concerning Public Works Utilities.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Nathan Volkey, District 3, again. I would make a motion at this point to hold Bill 61-20 until our meeting on September the 21st, 2020.
Is there a second?
In light of the concern over surprising some constituents who may or may not be under significant financial duress due to COVID-related matters, I second that.
Okay, we have a motion to hold the vote on Bill 61-20 until September 21st. Mr. Barron, would you like to weigh in on this motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the administration. Would like to get myself a flag. I, I appreciate the, the position of the maker of the motion. I do wanna just point out that the bill has been in place for, I think, 50 days now. I understand a work session would be helpful, but this administration has always made itself available to answer questions or address concerns. And I believe this was brought to our attention, that there were concerns on Friday before a holiday weekend. So with that, we think this bill is ready to go. We think it's fair and balanced. If the council determines to hold, the administration will again be ready to answer any questions you may have. So with that, we would hope we would move the bill.
Any further discussion on the motion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill 61-20 until 9/21.
Mr. Pruski?
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, the motion to hold the vote on Bill 61-20 until September 21st is adopted, is passed, apologies.
We'll hold the vote until, on Bill 61-20, until 9/21. I would suggest my colleagues get all their questions lined up for the work session next week, and be prepared to vote on this on 9/21, as, as I've said before, we have packed agendas going forward. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 64-20.
Bill Number 64-20, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Subdivision and Development and Zoning, Glenberne Sustainable Community Overlay Area.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. This is Allison Pickard, District 2, Chair of the County Council. This is actually my bill, and I am very pleased to bring it forward tonight. I'll give a, a brief introduction to the bill, I'll let the administration respond, and then we'll open the floor to questions. The Glenberne Sustainable Community Overlay Area bill is born out of a community, long-serving community conversation that I've been having with my constituents, who are really wanting to see positive change in the Glenberne area. The Saint, the Sustainable Community is a state designation that Glenberne received back in 2013, and has been renewed going forward, another five-year term until 2023. But when it was designated in 2013, it was really, there was a lot of work put into the application, and it was adopted by the state. And yet, we really, as a county, didn't do much beyond that application. The area has been designated as a place that is in, in need of revitalization and redevelopment, as we have some of the oldest commercial corridors down both Crane Highway, the BNA Boulevard, and Ritchie Highway. They're quite unique in that they're quite narrow, and they are surrounded by residential, very mature residential areas. We also, the Glenberne Sustainable Community encapsulates what's known as the Glenberne Town Center. And unlike the Odenton Town Center or the Parole Town Center, it never did receive a, have a master plan. It has not been, while it did receive some benefit of an urban, urban renewal process back in the early 1990s, really that entailed building some county and state-owned buildings, but didn't have the same attention as Odenton and the Parole Town Center to the surrounding commercial and residential areas that surround those government buildings. So we have a, we have a government hub up in Glenberne, and we've had, my community is tired of seeing vacant gas stations and vacant buildings and underutilized parcels. So with that, I worked quite hard with both my community and professional planners and the county to really think about how Anarodol County, and specifically in this area of Glenberne, we can rethink revitalization and redevelopment. Really, in the code, our land use policies treat redevelopment the same as they do greenfield development. Glenberne is, in that entire mapped area, is pretty intensely developed and has been for a long time. And, and yet, our policies have not really driven or incentivized the private sector to reinvest and keep that sustainability factor going in that surrounding area. We have many older shopping centers that have seen revolving tenants. Very few of them are 100% occupied. And we also have seen, like I mentioned, the vacant gas station, and you'll hear me say it 10 times if you hear it once tonight, because we, if we have one, we have 10. Small, old gas stations that are on small parcels that line corners. And so there, there's some key things in this bill, and I'm gonna go over just a couple of them that I, I think are really cool and an opportunity to see change. One is the ability to assemble parcels, like that gas station that's probably zone C4, but it's abutted by a little W1 parcel, and next to it, maybe a little R10 parcel. And together, that one-acre gas station could now be a three, three-and-a-half, four-acre corner with opportunities when you can be more flexible with the use charts and things, and the setbacks that engage, that come into effect with the different zoning. We see a lot of that up and down our old commercial corridors. The other cool part of this bill is an opportunity for enhanced community engagement earlier in the development process. Right now, this bill mandates that an investor or developer come to the community early in their process with a concept plan with 11 points before they've gone all the way through to that 13-page sketch plan with, that has engineering and a lot of investment already in it. And get the community buy-in and buy-in from planning and zoning that this is a viable project that the community wants and will fit in the neighborhood. There's 11 different requirements to the concept plan. The one thing that's new and different that we haven't seen in the code is the requirement for 3D massing images, which, if you can think of a, rather than a flat piece of paper, if you can think of coming with a model where constituents can really see the scale of a project and how it fits with the neighboring and surrounding areas. So those are two really cool things. Another part of this bill, so with, with the concept plan, though, and the community engagement, the thought is the community will engage earlier in the process, and that input will have more weight. And then they have to come back for a second mandatory community meeting with both the community and planning and zoning, with their final site design. And, and again, securing community buy-in. There's also, the bill also addresses community enhancements to garner a bit more flexibility in the requirements. A developer or investor can offer back enhancements, whether it's a bus shelter, or improvements to a pocket park, or the addition of enhanced trailhead. There's a lot of, the BNA trail winds all the way through this area. And I would venture to guess that it, there's opportunity to enhance this part of the BNA trail, and getting the private sector to help with that is, I think, an important part of building sustainable community. When we redevelop, the other thing that will happen in redevelopment projects is giving that nod to stormwater, modern stormwater best practices that currently we don't have much of in the commercial quarter, because it was developed many, 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 many years ago, before stormwater was even discussed. And then there's the financial incentives of the commercial tax credit for projects that, that access this overlay, which, and 50% reduction in development and development application fees and permit fees. But I wanna be clear that that is, that does not include impact fees. So there's also, and then I'm gonna let the administration talk. There's also a, taking cues from the Road Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance in the Odenton Town Center. We've brought those and adopted those into this bill for the Glenberne Town Center. And then also, like, the, the Odenton Town Center and the Parole Town Center, at the very core of those mapped areas is a school adequate public facilities exemption. Now, in the Odenton Town Center, that school exemption is a straight exemption in the core. In the Parole Town Center, there were conditions added to require, if you were to receive the school APF exemption, you would have to put conditions on the kind of building. It would need to be mixed-use. It would need to be 50% one-bedroom or efficiency apartments, and the remaining could be no more than two bedrooms. It would have to also be in the very tight mapped area of the Glenberne Town Center, not the entire Sustainable Community mapped area. So it's a very, very specific provision that we've seen both in Parole and Odenton really not yield students. But we know that there's parcels in the Glenberne Town Center that, that are gonna rely on a residential component to be economically viable and, and to help create the walkable, sustainable, livable community that Glenberne really wants to see happen. So with that, this, this is a huge bill, and I must, before I forget, I wanna make sure I extend my sincere gratitude, I'm gonna get emotional, to Kristen Etzel, my legislative assistant, Ms. Lynn Miller, and Ms. Linda Schuet, who have walked through the last 18 months of this bill. And we're here tonight, and I'm super excited to put it before my colleagues. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the administration, and you have the floor, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Miller from OPC, as well as Mr. Kai Ziegler from Economic Development, Mr. McQuillan, and from law, Ms. Lori Blair-Klausmeyer. Just want to echo your comments on the hard work and, and your thanks to, to Ms. Kristin Etzel. She has definitely done a lot of work, as you have, on this. I think it was very early on in, in 2019 where you grabbed myself, the county executive, and several key members of the administration, and, and I don't want to say dragged us by the ear, but dragged us by the ear around the area that we are talking about in, in Glenn Burney and showed us firsthand the, the need for the county to rethink the way we are doing redevelopment. And, and it fits very well with the ethos of this administration, which is looking at where we have the infrastructure, where we have the assets, and, and redeveloping in these great communities that, that are all over the county. And the, the amount of work that just you and I have discussed on, on this bill is, you know, countless hours, and, and that doesn't even begin to scratch the surface of, of the work that has been done by Ms. Miller and, and the team over at OPC, as well as the folks at Economic Development. So I do want to turn it over to Ms. Miller to talk a little bit about the technical aspects of this and, and sort of walk the council through what the, the product of this bill is really intended to, to, to deliver. So with that, Ms. Miller, can you say a few words? And then we're happy to answer any questions, or actually, ask Mr. McQuillan to, to add a few thoughts, too. And then we're happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Lynn Miller, Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer. Thank you, Mr. Barron, and Councilwoman Pickard. I think Councilwoman Pickard gave a very good overview and summary of the bill, so I, I won't add too much more at this time. As she noted, we have been working on this for a long time. We, you know, looked at what their jurisdictions have done to try to promote redevelopment. We met with representatives of the development community and also with a wide range of different stakeholder groups. So it involved a lot of outreach and a lot of thinking about how we could best approach this and provide a new tool that hopefully developers and property owners can use to improve Glenn Burney. So we think it's a solid piece of work. We're also very excited about it. We're, our office is sort of looking at this as a pilot test because it's a little different from any overlays we've had in the past. So we're also very anxious to see how it works, and we're very hopeful that it's going to help facilitate some interesting redevelopment projects in Glenn Burney. So without going into a lot of technical detail, because I think Councilwoman Pickard touched on some of the key points, but it does use a combination of development incentives and financial incentives to try to create a tool that will help accomplish the purpose of the bill. So we, we tried hard to strike a, a good balance between providing the flexibility that developers of this type of development usually need, while still offering the protection that we want to provide in terms of public facilities and community impacts. So we hope we've done that, we found a reasonable balance. And again, we're, we're hopeful that it will help accomplish some good things in Glenn Burney. So with that, I will be available for the rest of the evening to answer any more specific questions you might have.
Mr. McQuillan, did you want to add anything from Economic Development?
Or thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, Wes McQuillan with Anarondal Economic Development Corporation. I just want to echo everyone's thoughts. Our office, one of our main focuses is revitalization in these commercial corridors, especially in the revitalization districts. So we're excited about this bill that adds another tool to our toolbox to help encourage property owners and business owners to, to redevelop, redevelop these properties. And I think it's worth noting that in preparation for this legislation, the councilwoman has spent a lot of time meeting with key stakeholders in this, in this area, business owners, property owners, developers who have done projects like these in other jurisdictions. And I think she's done a good job of identifying tools and incentives that, that will encourage redevelopment in this area. So we're, our office is excited about it. We're excited to continue to push for revitalization in the county. Thank you.
Do you have any questions, my colleagues? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Ms. Miller, I just want to ask you about the history of this legislation. As I understand it, this has been kicking around for a number of years, even dating back to the last administration, this idea of doing a bill like this. Were you involved with that during the last administration at all?
Lynn Miller, Office of Planning and Zoning. While we have been talking about the topic of promoting more revitalization for a long time, really since the early 2000s, when the commercial, original commercial revitalization overlays were adopted into our code, I don't think we've ever really engaged in trying to craft a bill specifically like this one. So it's a topic that's been around for a while, but I think the specifics are kind of something new.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. I, I had heard this iteration from some other folks, too, and I'm glad that Madam Chair was able to take this and move forward with it. I guess my one question for planning and zoning would be this: if this is such a good idea, why is it that it's limited only to Glenn Burney?
Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. Again, this, because there are some new aspects to this legislation that we haven't tried yet in Anarondal County, we, we were interested in, you know, doing this as sort of a pilot test to see how it works, who's able to use it, you know, to, to what level. And it's certainly, this type of thing could certainly have applicability elsewhere in the county. But Glenn Burney, being one of our state-designated sustainable communities and having its specific combination of, you know, a certain level of decline that it's experienced recently, seemed like a very appropriate place to try this pilot test. It, it has a lot of the characteristics within which I think an overlay like this could work very well.
So to follow up on that, Ms. Miller, you indicated that this has some of the characteristics that you look for, and, and in the overlay, obviously, there's an exemption from the school APF, but two of the three schools that fall within the overlay area are over capacity at nearly 104 and 105%, that being the elementary and the high school. The middle school has significant capacity. My question would be, what makes this particular area the, the sort of target or the right place to do this sort of overlay from OPC's standpoint?
Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. As I mentioned earlier, something that we spent a lot of time on was trying to find a balance. So redevelopment and revitalization tend to be challenging and sometimes costly for property owners and developers. So, you know, we, we think of it in, in terms of sort of a give and take and, and try to strike a balance. So we've crafted this as best we could to try to promote redevelopment as best we could while minimizing impacts. So I think that the way the school exemption was crafted, try to achieve that balance. It does offer an exemption, but it's, it's offered to a relatively small area within the overlay. I think the, the area of the potential exemption is about 67 acres, and that's out of 5,000 acres in the entire proposed overlay. So it's around 1% of the total area that could potentially get the exemption. And as you've seen in the bill, it also requires that there would be a combination or a mix of uses, and if that combination includes residential units, at least half of them would have to be efficiency or one-bedrooms, which data has typically indicated those types of units don't generate a lot of school-aged children.
Thank you.
Thank you. As the sponsor of this bill, it's, it's extremely appropriate to, to talk about school APF because it's, it's a hot topic in the county. But we also know, this is, if you recall the map, there's a map with a very small carve-out of the exact town center, which is currently developed. There's no green space. So in order to develop any bits of that area we're talking with, it is a redevelopment situation. There are also viable businesses, and more than 60% of that 68 acres is already government, county, or state-owned buildings. So there's an opportunity to revitalize, you know, a small part with the school APF exemption. But it's important to note also that while the elementary school is, is at capacity, the elementary schools in the Glenn Burney feeder are at 87% occupancy. The middle schools are at 71% occupancy, and the high school is at 104% occupancy, but we're also building a 14th high school to accommodate a red, a redistricting of the, which is probably going to affect about seven feeders. So this bill really isn't, that provision is such a small part of this bill. But I do believe that the parcels that are in most need of creating a vibrant town center area, what that my constituents really want, they really do have to have a residential component. If they didn't, they would already be revitalized because there's a block that's been vacant for probably two, two decades. But, but it's an appropriate conversation to have, and I, I thank you for bringing it up. Ms. Hare, I think you had your flag up next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is less of a question and more of a comment. I just, I know that we had a, a time to review this, and I, I think balance is so tough when coming to revitalization, and I'm actually, I think that this use of an overlay in this instance is really interesting. I'm actually looking forward to seeing how this gets implemented over the next year or so. I, I just, I know that you've worked very hard on this, and it's, I think it's a cool idea. I'm excited to support it, and, and I hope that it can be deployed in other areas of the county if, if it does work the way I think you envision it and the way that, that I am hoping that it, that it does work. So that's it.
Thank you. I think it's important to note, because we do have other places in the county that could benefit from revitalization, but the exact provisions laid out in this Glenn Burney Sustainable Community, really, we're looking very specifically about at the, the aging commercial corridors, the economic viability. I mean, it's very specific. Everything that we cherry-picked out of the Odenton Town Center Master Plan and the Parole Town Center Master Plan, we didn't just pick up those plans and plop them down in Glenn Burney. We looked very specifically about the needs to this area, where I do think there's some, some concepts, if they work, like this concept plan idea and bringing in the community earlier, which I think helps both the community and the investor or developer, because they haven't invested a lot of money to then be told, no, your project's not going to work. They can come feeling a little more confident that they're going to get green, they'll get green-lighted if the community and the planning and zoning think that it's viable. That kind of thing, I think, could work other places, but I wouldn't just, I wouldn't want to sell this as picking up the Glenn Burney Sustainable Community overlay and going countywide with it, or, or just taking it somewhere else. I think each area of our county is very unique, and we know that with our peninsulas and in our critical area. There's other parts of the county that while may have a parcel or two that need revitalization, not to the same scale as the, this Glenn Burney Sustainable Community that's already been identified by the state. And with that, projects do, because they are already in a sustainable community, have access to certain economic programs at the state level, demolition funds and some other things that maybe Mr. McQuillan could talk more about. But I am really excited, I'm, I'm, obviously, it, it's, it's a little, I feel like it's my fourth-born child right now. But, Mr. Volkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three, again. Mr. McQuillan, I'll start with you. In terms of the commercial space that's involved in this overlay, in light of COVID-19, in light of the changing trends and patterns that we're seeing in commercial spaces, retail, et cetera, what impact at all do you think this pandemic will have on the demand in this corridor for commercial properties, if you will, or, or for commercial redevelopment? How does Economic Development view this?
I think that, Wes McQuillan, Economic Development, I, I think that not just this corridor, but it's going to be countywide, statewide. It's going to be a, a reset to the, to the real estate market, specifically the commercial real estate market. You know, obviously retailers are affected currently. You know, they were hit hard in March, and I think they continue to suffer under the, the restrictions that are currently in place. I think we will see more businesses closing, unfortunately. I think retailers are going to rethink the way that they, that they do business, especially, you know, big-box retailers. I think that they're definitely going to rethink their space needs and their space requirements. We've already seen the emergence of e-commerce already, so I think that we'll definitely see a big shift towards that. But as far as the town center is concerned, I still think that there'll be a market there when, when this goes away and, and things get back to normal. You know, there's lots of, there's lots of good businesses there now, and, and I think that they'll, they'll survive, and hopefully with this legislation, they'll be able to thrive.
Thank you. Nathan Volkey, District Three, again. My next question is, is for Mr. Kai Ziegler or Ms. Miller, I guess, from Office of Planning and Zoning. But was there any discussion in the initial stages of this bill with this sort of overlay, this floating overlay concept being countywide as opposed to limited to a specific geographic area in Glenn Burney?
I can start with that. Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. In the very early stages of this, one slightly different concept we looked at was that of a floating zone. And a floating zone differs from an overlay in that when it's initially adopted, it's not placed on a specific geographic area. It's usually just adopted into your code, and then once in place, an applicant can apply to have that zone placed on their specific geographic area. So sort of like, a little more like a rezoning. We looked at that concept as, as well as an overlay. We like the way that the overlay works, and again, the idea of trying it out specifically in Glenn Burney first. I think there were also some potential complications noted by the law office in trying to adopt an overlay zone, I mean, a floating zone. And I can't remember all the specifics because it's been about a year now, but I, I think it may have even required a charter amendment to adopt that, that type of zone. We don't have any floating zones in the county now. They're not as commonly used in the planning world as overlays. So that, that was another alternative that we looked at in the earlier stages before we decided that the overlay approach was probably the better approach. Thank you.
Thank you. And Nathan Volkey, District Three. So to follow up on that question, with respect to future overlays, what's the position of Office of Planning and, what is the position of the Office of Planning and Zoning with respect to potential new overlays that would have similar underlying characteristics to this overlay? Is the Office of Planning and Zoning open to those concepts, provided that this turns out to be a good idea? provided that this turns out to be a good idea?
Mr. Kai Ziegler, you have your hand up.
Thank you. Good evening. Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. Actually, the answer is yes, very much so. I think the thinking process here is, we've worked on a pilot. We spent a year, 18 months, helping it get to this point. I think over the next several months, perhaps year, 18 months, we need to monitor the hoped-for success of this overlay. The idea is that if it is a workable tool, and I think you've heard also that it is designed for Glen Burnie very specifically, and that there will be the potential to do more overlays in other parts of the county, but they need to be tailored to those specific geographic areas and the circumstances. So we're open to it. Our first thought is the best way to apply the concept would be within the region planning process. And that probably works for the first three regions that are picked. It will be a little more difficult for the following six, depending on the timing. If that's the case, the later region plans, we may need to consider doing an overlay before we get into those region planning processes, simply because overlays typically affect a relatively small geographic area. So we're actually very excited about the potential for this one, let alone the potential to do them in the future.
Ms. Lacy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sarah Lacy, District 1. Ms. Miller, can you give an estimate of, suppose today I said, "Wow, Bill 6420 is fantastic, and I would love to see if I could apply it to a different area in my district, let's just say Severn." I know Severn already has a sustainable community designation to it. Suppose I don't want to wait to see the actual implementation, the full implementation of Bill 6420. But I assume it's so great, it's definitely going to work. So if I sat down with you today, based on your experience in helping to put together Bill 6420, how many months of work do you think it would take us to come up with a bill for the Severn Sustainable Community?
Lynn Miller, Office of Planning and Zoning. And I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part of your question. How many, how many meetings of work?
How many months of work?
How many months of work?
It took about 18 months. Now, of course, you know, if you're the pioneer, it may take quite a bit longer than it would take the second bill following in her footsteps. But yes, how long do you think it would take us? Six months, maybe?
I think that a lot of the research and sort of exploring and looking at ideas that have, you know, been useful in other places, that's been done, so that would help. But I also think that doing a fair amount of outreach is really important among the stakeholder groups in whatever geographic area you're looking at. So I still think it's a time investment, but I would not think that another similar type of overlay would potentially take quite this much time because some of the work's already been done. You know, as Mr. Kai Ziegler noted, we tend, as planners, we tend to prefer adopting zoning tools like overlays as part of a planning process. So I think that's why Mr. Ziegler's referring to the idea that doing these as part of a regional plan or some other plan is always a good idea. So we would keep that in mind. But if there is a reason that one is particularly needed in a certain area of the county, and it's going to be a while before we get to that region plan, you know, we're certainly open to looking at similar ideas wherever the council would like us to.
Mr. Behrendt, are you raising your hand?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just to sort of pile on to Ms. Miller's point, to Councilwoman Lacy's question, I think Madam Chair kind of undersold the amount of outreach that she did with the communities. So I would agree, and definitely not a planning expert here with Ms. Miller, that some of the bush has been cleared to move us forward. But there's a lot of outreach, and depending on the specifics of the local organizations, community groups, what have you, will depend on the timeline.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3, again. Mr. Kai Ziegler, something that you mentioned a few moments ago when you were speaking was the concept of doing similar overlays during the regional planning process that you have slated for the general development plan after that's been adopted by the council. My question would be this, because I've heard this sort of refrain or some variation of this repeated often. "We should just wait for the GDP to do this. These things shouldn't be done in a vacuum." Why is this appropriate, this particular Glen Burnie overlay right now, outside of the regional planning process and outside of the general development plan, whereas so many other things that have come to the council and have frankly been less significant have been suggested that they need to wait for the GDP process?
Again, good evening. Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. When I came into my current job with Anaronda County, which was July of last year, there were already some discussions about the potential of doing something like this. We liked the idea at the time, and still do, that an overlay that dealt with revitalization and redevelopment was a good thing. We started it officially at a time and place where the GDP was still quite a ways off. And so we've worked on this really with the idea of a, as a pilot. And one of the things that we're very interested in bringing along with this, we didn't really talk about this a lot, but there's essentially a citizen advisory implementation group that is a part of this. And we wanted to create this group to help guide this process, but also to help monitor and give us essentially a report card for how successful we all were with this new overlay concept. The idea is to set up a pilot for the overlay, but also a pilot for how we'll do citizen participation, but how citizens can help us as we move forward with both the GDP and all the region plans in better assuring that they're actually implemented. That is a key function, one of the, I'm going to say, most desirable parts that we felt was important in including this. And the sponsor of the bill, I think, agreed with that very, very much because we have received over the years a great deal of criticism, some of it warranted, that we haven't actually implemented the plans that have been adopted. So all those factors came into play. That made sense for us to participate in a significant way in creating this as a pilot, and again, hoping that it's successful. It can be, a version of it could be applied to other geographic parts of the county. When you think about doing that, I think the best way, we've spoken about this, is to try and do them as a part of a planning process. We know after GDP, we'll be starting three region plans. We don't know which ones those are yet. But including this in those first three, if it makes sense, makes sense. In the other, I'm going to say, region plans four through nine, that will happen after the first three. If it makes sense for us to participate in a planning process just like those in those areas, we are open to it. I don't think we can do all of them at one time from a capacity standpoint. But we're really hopeful that this is going to be a success story, that we can apply a version up to other parts of the county.
This is Allison Pickard, District 2, sponsor of the bill. I would like to add, though, I spent, before even getting elected, the Glen Burnie Small Area, 2004 Small Area Plan was my nightly reading. It sat on my nightstand, which was a plan that had tremendous community input and yet very little action taken. It sort of sat dormant on a shelf. Some things were kick-started, but very little really took shape. So, and then, and then Mr. Kai Ziegler did mention the Glen Burnie Revitalization Implementation Task Force, who've been meeting over the last year, was made up of constituents and stakeholders alike to play an active role in not just this legislation, but other aspects of improving the community there, all born out of plans that have already gone through a process. This legislation has truly bubbled up from constituents in my district who want to see Glen Burnie thrive. They want to see their hometown, where they've lived their whole life, sustain itself. And we are actually, the Glen Burnie area actually has a younger average age than the rest of the county, which makes it just ripe for some positive impact. They want to be able to walk to that town center and make it safe along the way. And some of this is redevelopment and revitalization, and some of it is just rethinking some of the way we maintain our own county property. So the Glen Burnie Revitalization Implementation Task Force will remain in effect beyond this bill. It really, that's only one small aspect of improving the community. So this has been a real labor of love for me, but it's been that labor of love in response to real input from the community. That's been going, the concern has been there a long time, and I just was able to be tenacious and work it through. So, Mr. Volkey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District 3, again. So Mr. Kai Ziegler, just following up on our previous line of questioning, I want to make sure that I understood correctly. You were saying you were indicating a pre-iteration of the Glen Burnie Small Area Plan for an overlay for a development model similar to what we're looking at. And so now, as we are on the very front end of a brand-new GDP, a new regional plan, now we're going to be looking at a pre-iteration of the Glen Burnie Plan, by a certain factor.
Did you hear any of that, Mr. Kai Ziegler? You're a bit garbled, Mr. Volkey. Can you?
A bummer. All right, I'll try.
Shorten it? What's the point?
I don't know that I can shorten it, but my question, Mr. Kai Ziegler, was this. 2004 was the Small Area Plan. There was a previous iteration of the General Development Plan. We're now about to go into that with regional plans. Is now the right moment to be implementing that version of what Glen Burnie should look like in light of the new GDP that's coming?
So Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer, again. I think the timing of this speaks for itself. It's already gone through a pretty extensive process. Significant time has been committed to it. I think the council's ready for a vote very soon. It happened when it happened. Now, we have a GDP that you'll be getting at the end of this year, earlier as drafts. I think Planning and Zoning staff is comfortable with the timing of this. We also recognize with the GDP, it opens up a window to do a variety of other overall comprehensive planning-type processes, including the region plans. So if I heard your question correctly, and I'm not sure that I did, we're very comfortable with the timing of this bill in relation to where we're at with the GDP.
That was my question. Thank you.
And this is Allison Pickard, District 2. I've actually answered this, a similar question, on my social media page. I want to make sure that everybody, my colleagues and the public, know this isn't a plan. This is a tool for the private sector to break down barriers to redevelopment. It's not a plan. There isn't a master plan like the Odenton Town Center or the Parole Town Center. This is just a tool to really look at those vacant, underutilized, abandoned properties and give the private sector that incentive to choose redevelopment over greenfield development and to do it in this community, this mapped area that is very densely populated and is ready to see their vacant buildings turned into something cool and new and innovative and modern. So it's not a plan. It's a tool. So I just want to be clear, because I've answered that question on my Facebook page as well. Are there any other questions or comments on Bill 64-20? We do have a technical amendment.
Madam Chair.
I got it. I'm good.
Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 64-20. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We've had eight submissions of written testimony, which we shared with the council and posted on the council website.
Thank you. We will now hear from members of the public who signed up ahead of time. We have one person signed up to speak on this bill. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. When it is your turn, please unmute yourself and begin by stating your name and address. We will begin with Ms. Amy Leahy. Ms. Leahy, are you with us this evening? She was here earlier. Ms. Leahy?
I do not see her on the attendees list.
Okay, maybe she has turned in for the night. With that, the public hearing on Bill Number 64-20 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 64-20.
Bill Number 6420, An Organs Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget, Subdivision, and Development and Zoning, Glen Burnie Sustainable Community Overlay Area.
Thank you. As I stated, there is a technical amendment. Once it is on the screen, Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 1.
Amendment Number 1. This technical amendment correctly identifies the section that describes the purposes of the Glen Burnie Sustainable Community Overlay District.
Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Number 1?
Councilwoman Pruski, say.
Is there a second?
Lacy, second.
Thank you. This is a technical amendment that just corrects a referencing error. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 1.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 1 is adopted.
As this was a technical amendment, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 64-20 as amended.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
As there was no opportunity for comment prior to voting, I'm going to take a brief moment and exercise privilege before voting to make a statement, if that's acceptable.
A brief statement is acceptable.
Thank you. So I'm going to vote in favor of this bill. I do have some concerns about the inconsistency with which Office of Planning and Zoning and the administration weighs in on these particular bills and what they think is appropriate pre and post GDP. But that's not the sponsor's fault, and she's done an excellent job working this legislation through with the community and with the stakeholders in the county. So I applaud her for that. As somebody who did use to go to the Glen Burnie Movie Theater as a kid and has lived in this community for 33 years now, I agree that this area does need some redevelopment, and I think that hopefully this bill will do something toward that. So with that, I'm voting in favor of the bill. Thank you for the opportunity to explain my vote.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 6420, as amended, is passed.
Thank you. And as a point of personal privilege, Allison Pickard, Chair, D2, I want to thank my colleagues for taking time in the August recess to meet with me individually to talk over this bill. And I want to thank the administration for putting up with the most tenacious councilperson. This has been, like I said, a labor of love. This has been, like I said, a labor of love and I really can't thank everybody enough for their technical expertise and sticking with me and making this vision a reality. And let's see, let's see what it were. I'm just hopeful it'll be as impactful as we all think it will. So thank you again. We have, we thought we were going to be voting on some resolutions, but I
Nope.
We're not doing that.
As far as I know, I have not heard anything.
Is there, is there any business to be brought before the county council at this time?
Councilman Pruski, motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second. Volkey.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until 6:00 PM on September 21st, 2020. Reminder, there is a work session scheduled for Tuesday, September 15th, 2020, beginning at 9:00 AM. While there is no public participation, there are options for watching and listening. Please check the county website for more information. And I want to thank all of our OIT staff and our county council staff for their hard work in creating our new opportunity for public engagement. So well done, everybody. Have a great night. It's a, it's a good day.